And then. And then part two of the Housing Staff Report, which is one of the things we handed to you earlier today. And then there's the memo of responses to the Planning Commission questions about the housing stuff. I think we handed that to you, too. And then there is a letter from an attorney that was provided to the council related to the last version of the marijuana amendments, but the Planning Commission never saw that letter. And that letter is referenced in the correspondence. Uh, that. I'm not seeing that printed out here.
Yeah.
We could print out that course one. No. And if you go in the planning commission folder, it would be item five A. So we're just going to print out one more agenda item attachment that will make sense to go with that attorney's letter. And then the last thing you should have is this memo about water capacity.
Okay. Ready, rock and roll?
Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead and call the SKA Planning Commission meeting to order. What are we, Thursday, September 22nd at about 7:02? Can we do a roll call? Sure thing. Commissioner Hartwig?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins? Oh. All right. She's raising a hand. She's present.
Sorry. Sorry, I'm here. I just wasn't in the little room. I was a watcher. I was a worker. Now I'm in. Hi.
That's my fault. Uh, Commissioner Ennis? Mr. Sager?
Yep.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Commissioner Brutal? Commissioner Wheeler, or Chairman Wheeler, sorry. Yeah. All right, looks like we have a forum. All right. First thing of business on the, or item of business on the agenda is the approval of the September 15 meeting minutes, which was just last week. Should be fresh on everybody's minds. Hopefully.
I move the approval.
We got a motion. We got a second. Is there any reason to discuss? All right, all those in favor of approving the September 15 minutes, raise your right hand.
Yep.
All right. Motion carries. Approved. Uh, first item of business for public hearings is ordinance 2002-010, SKA proposing to amend the Housing Chapter of the SKA Comprehensive Plan. And we will hand that over to planning staff to get us underway.
Okay. Um, all right, so this is the continuation of the first public hearing on ordinance 2022-010, amending the Housing Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan and amending several chapters of Title 16, which is the Development Code. Could you up my mic volume a little bit so I don't have to hold it so close? Number seven. Thank you. That's, yeah, that's. Um, maybe a little less. So the original hearing date for this ordinance was Thursday, August 25th. And during that Planning Commission meeting, we presented an overview of what changes this ordinance is proposing. Um, the ordinance is not proposing, I'm gonna get that out of the way. The ordinance is not proposing all of the strategies that are listed in the Housing Strategies Report. For example, the ordinance will not rezone any land. We are not changing the urban growth boundary. There's no changes to how we collect SDCs or how much we collect. Um, we're not establishing a construction excise tax or any other kind of fee. Um, and we're not entering into any public-private partnerships or inter-agency partnerships. We're also not dividing or developing any land. Uh, most of those items on that list were um, described as potential strategies that the cities could pursue in the future. They were, they were included in the list of strategies in the Housing Strategies Report. Um, but adopting this ordinance will not do any of those things. So the ordinance is only making changes to the Housing Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan and to several parts of the Development Code that relate to the development of housing. We printed out part two of the Staff Report, for those of you who are here in person. Um, and that section of the Staff Report starts on page seven of the Staff Report or page 15 of the packet PDF. Um, so part two of the Staff Report is where we summarized the types of changes that are being proposed with this ordinance. And I think the easiest way to categorize the Development Code amendments is that they fall into five um, basic categories that are explained in part two of the Staff Report. And so those categories are facilitating missing middle housing, establishing minimum density requirements, promoting accessory dwelling units or ADUs, streamlining or reducing off-street parking for middle housing only, and facilitating the development of non-conforming lots. So you'll see in part two of the Staff Report, there are several types of amendments that can fall into each of those five categories. So for example, the first category, facilitating missing middle housing um, includes amendments like permitting middle housing outright, reducing minimum lot sizes for middle housing only, not for single-family homes, um, increasing the allowed density for middle housing, and then reducing some specific barriers like setbacks um, for certain types or maximum lot coverage for certain housing types only. So each of those five categories on the screen um, is broken down in the Staff Report and then was also explained by the consultant team in more detail during their presentation. And so if the Planning Commission tonight has more questions about any of the specific amendments in those categories, then we can discuss that. Also, on August 25th, we reviewed the ordinance according to the approval criteria that apply to Development Code or Comprehensive Plan amendments. Um, and so section 16.128.020 of the Esticada Municipal Code requires that legislative amendments such as this ordinance need to be reviewed by the Planning Commission, who then makes a recommendation to the City Council based on findings about whether or not the amendments meet the approval criteria established in the code. So the approval criteria for these amendments are um, reviewed in detail in the Staff Report. And then basically, the Planning Commission needs to determine whether or not the amendments satisfy or conflict with the criteria, which are statewide planning goals, um, the city's comprehensive plan goals or policies, um, and then the Development Code requirements for these amendments. Um, also, on August 25th, um, the consultant team gave a more detailed presentation about the amendments and what they contain. Um, they answered several questions that came up during that meeting. And then the Planning Commission voted to recess the hearing in order to gather additional information. Um, and then the consultant team and city staff uh, provided responses to those additional questions. Um, those responses are included in the memo that is exhibit 13 in your packet. Um, we also printed those out for you here in person. The memo begins on page 223 of the packet. Um, and we would be happy to walk through any of those responses that the Planning Commission wants to. And then lastly, we have received a few um, additional pieces of testimony since the last hearing. This includes, um, so on the screen, you're seeing all of the testimony that we've received regarding this ordinance. Um, but the additional testimony that we've gotten since the last hearing includes correspondence with John Kirkpatrick in opposition to the proposal. That's in exhibit number 11. Um, I should note that Mr. Kirkpatrick's comments did include concerns about a construction excise tax and system development charges. Um, and like I said at the beginning, those things are not being proposed with these amendments. So there's been a little confusion about what all is included in the ordinance, and I just want to make sure we clarify. Ordnance is not accomplishing all 19 strategies that are in that Housing Strategies Report. It only includes the housing um, code and policy strategies. And then the other piece of testimony that we received is exhibit 10, which is a letter of support from a local real estate um, development company that is encouraging the council to allow ground floor residential development in the downtown zone fronting Main Street. Uh, where currently the downtown zone prohibits ground floor residential um, from fronting Main Street. So you could have residential on a second, second floor, but um, currently you would need to have something commercial on the first floor. Um, so the amendment would be um, is proposing to remove that bit, that being a barrier to the development of needed housing. So that's an option that we will present as an option to the council. And then if the Planning Commission wants to discuss that further tonight, we can capture any um, preference or recommendation um, of the Planning Commission to forward to the council about that. So I think at this point, I want to check with our consultants and see if there's anything they want to add or anything that I might have missed. Um, and then I think we can open up for questions and discussion with the commission.
Um, this is Matt Hasty. I don't have anything to add. I think, I don't, you didn't miss anything from my perspective. Um, it was great summary. Um, we're happy to um, to respond verbally or discuss the responses that we sent y'all in the um, in the memo. Um, but only if you want us to do that. So, thank you.
All righty.
Does Kate have anything?
Oh, thanks. Nothing from me.
Okay. Planning Commission, you got anything? Any questions at this point in time? There's a lot here. So the better means.
Right. I have a question. Why are, why are we in such a hurry to get this done? You, you're, the people that did the study even said that in 20 years, it will not be at that threshold of 10,000. And their, their estimate is high compared to Portland State's. So I don't understand what the rush is to uh, to make substandard lots. And, and the parking situation, we discussed that the last time that we.
Can you make sure you're talking into your mic? Can you guys hear what's being said? Sorry, thank you.
Are they shaking their head? Yes.
I saw a thumbs up.
Okay. All right. Those are my, that's my question. Why, why the rush when there doesn't appear that there's going to be that will be necessary in the next 20 years?
So let me quickly respond to that, and Taylor may have some things to add. I, I guess I would say I don't consider us to be in a rush. We've been working on this project now for close to two years. Um, and so we've been moving forward, I would say, in a pretty methodical way. We've had a lot of community engagement and discussion around these issues. Um, I would not call this rush by any measure that I would use. Um, so I, I would sort of take issue with saying that we're in a rush. I, I just don't think we are. Um, I would say that the housing needs analysis and the, and the, the analysis that it incorporates is based on a set of population projections that come out of the Portland State University Population Research Center. Those projections get updated every four years. If you wait too much longer on this, they will come up with a new set of projections and you will have to find a way to redo the analysis. So that will come at a cost to the city to redo that analysis. And so I'm working with a couple of other cities that are going through similar processes, and for them at least, that's an issue. They don't want to go back and kind of have to redo analyses. So that's one thing I would note. Um, the other thing I would just note is that the code amendments are intended to implement um, and address the findings of that housing needs analysis. And those findings indicated that there is a need for a broad range of housing types to meet the needs of community members um, in Esticada, and that your existing code really presents some pretty significant barriers to being able to develop or build or provide for those housing types. Um, and if you sort of look at the pattern and mix of development of housing that's occurred in Esticada in the last really decade or more, you'd simply have not been producing, that those things have not been produced or developed in large part because of the things that are in your development code. So um, I don't think we're in a rush, but I do think that these are important things to move forward. I think that there's been a lot of community discussion around them. And I think there are real sort of financial costs associated with waiting too long and having to re-undertake some of that analysis that is sort of the underpinning of the recommendations. I don't think things are going to change, frankly, very much. But I do think you'd have to go back and, and again, enlist somebody to redo that analysis for you. So that's how I would respond to that question, and I'm, you know, Taylor might have some things to add, or Kate, but, but that's what I would say.
I'll just, I'll just add one thing on to what Matt said, which is that the, you know, the, the 20-year projection and the buildable lands inventory found that there is ample land within the existing urban growth boundary to accommodate future growth in Esticada. But the, the way that land is designated doesn't necessarily support the broad range of housing types that are needed in the community based on that analysis. So, I mean, the, I think you're, you're kind of referring to the findings that say no changes are needed, but that's really just to the sort of one aspect, that urban growth boundary. But there's other aspects of, of the Development Code um, that could better support housing needs in the.
In fact, there's not an ample supply of land that's zoned to meet some of the types of housing that haven't been built but are needed. Um, you're really kind of on the threshold of having enough, and that's at those very low growth rates that um, the, that Portland State has previously assumed when we looked at sort of what we think is a more realistic alternative analysis. You would run out of the land that's zoned to build those types of housing much sooner. And you've got other areas of the city that, where you simply can't, you can't um, develop some of those types of housing, including some forms of what we've described as middle housing, which are frankly more compatible um, in some of the existing areas than um, necessarily, you know, multifamily. But all of those things are needed. Um, and they're not needed 20 years from now. They're needed much sooner than that.
Uh, in their report, they said they needed 637 housing units by 2041. Out of those 637, how many of those will, will be needed that would be multifamily?
Approximately 20% of those units were identified as uh, multifamily and approximately 10% in some of those middle uh, housing types. And again, that's based on the current set of projections from PSU, which I think both the consulting team and city staff and what you've seen in terms of development approvals just within the last several years do actually undercount what's actually needed in the future. So those are the numbers we need to use officially per the state requirements. But we do not think that 687 number is really the, frankly, the right number based on what's occurred in Esticada during the last several years in terms of the level of development and what we would expect to occur moving into the future. So I think just looking at that number, it's not the right metric. It's the official metric because we have, we're beholden to use it per state law, but I would not consider it really the accurate metric. So I think it's important to kind of keep that in mind. That's why we did that alternative analysis, and we're not trying to say you should grow a whole bunch. We're just trying to say, here's what the trend has been. And here's what we might more reasonably expect in terms of future growth.
Hey, Matt, a question on the inventory versus projection, I guess would be a way to phrase it. Uh, out at Deuce Road, Eagle Creek Highway, I think we have 269 apartment units. That number six in my head, I might be wrong. So i-if we have 269 that are planned at this point in time, where does that fall in that 687? Is that included in the 687? Because if, if, if we have 687 and 20% of that, let's say 140 multifamily units, and we're slated to put 269 in there, it seems like we're exceeding. Are you following my logic and my math here?
Yeah.
And that's not the only multifamily we have on, on tap right now. So I'm just trying to figure out, is that included in the 687? Or is that, doesn't count because it's already quote-unquote developed or planned on being developed?
I would, I would interject, though, that I think most of the units that you're referring, referring to are um, sort of imagined units that were uh, described for the purpose of those subdivision applications. So they've created, or at least been permitted to create the lots where those apartments would go. Um, some of those lots haven't even been plotted yet, but the lots were approved to be created in those subdivisions. And those lots could allow multifamily development. But we haven't gotten any, like, building permit applications for them yet. There's only one apartment building that we have gotten building, building permit applications for that's on Wade Street, um, which is for 36 units. So I, so for the purpose of this analysis, they wouldn't have been able to take any of those um, hoped for or anticipated apartments or units into account.
But, but even in that situation, everybody in this room knows that those are there. We're, we have available land inventory proposed 270 plus 36, so we're over 300 units. But we're only calling out by 2041, we need a 140-ish. So we're, we're double the capacity by just what we have, but in future plots. So I, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out where those land.
So they don't, they, they're um, they would be part of the future projected supply if they were to actually be built. And I think what I'm hearing is um, they may or not be built as actual multifamily units. There's the potential for that to happen, but there's no actual approved development proposal that says there will be exactly this many units. But yeah, I mean, in terms of just answering your, your question, um, they are not, they're not there on the ground. So they would be part of the future supply. They would go towards meeting that projected need. And again, I would just say that um, yes, they're double what we would project under the official forecast, which we consider to be an under account um, of what's actually needed during the planning period.
Matt, I have a question on, as reading through this all over again today. Um, what was the criteria that was set forth to allow these buildings to go four, five, and six, six-story in our city? From what I can see, we're going to be looking just like Hillsborough with covering up our farmland and our, our city with asphalt, concrete, and houses, and absolutely nowhere for storm drain water to go.
So I can't speak to um, kind of issues related to storm drainage. What I can say is you have existing zones that already allow for a certain height of building, and we're really not proposing to change those things. So we're not proposing significant changes to allow building heights in any of those zones. Um, and what I would also say is that the existing allowed densities that you have in your multifamily zone, which is intended to be developed for multifamily housing, do not financially, do not make it financially feasible to develop apartments or to develop multifamily housing in those zones. And so our recommendations were based on discussions with members of the development community who developed that type of housing and with our partnering consulting firm, Johnson Economics, who works for those types of um, companies all over the state. Um, and we and they looked at your code and said, hey, if you want to create the opportunities, the options to develop the forms of housing that your comprehensive plan and your development code already says should be developed in those areas, there are going to need to be some changes to your code to make it actually financially feasible to develop those forms of housing. So our recommendations, we're not assuming that you're going to become Hillsborough. Um, if you kind of look at some of the densities that are developed in Hillsborough and other kind of I'll call them inner ring suburbs of Portland, we're really not talking about that. Um, we're really just talking about making it financially feasible to develop forms of housing that your development code already allows, but doesn't have standards that make it possible to develop in a financially feasible way. So that was sort of the underpinning of our recommendations related to um, allowable densities. Again, we're really not proposing any kind of significant changes to building heights. So we're not kind of advocating, and frankly, some, I will say that some of the heights that are allowed in some of those zones, if you're talking six, seven stories, you're just not going to see that um, in Esticada for a very long time, um, from a market perspective. Um, three or four stories maybe, and those are the kind of heights that are already allowed in your code. It's just that there's other pieces of your code that present barriers to being able to do what your code already allows in building heights, so.
And just to add one more sort of nuance to what Matt said, I think you might be referring to the, some of the mixed-use zones that were adopted relatively recently in Esticada, the mill area and central mixed-use zones. Those allow kind of the tallest heights, maybe outside of the downtown area in the city. And what Johnson Economics found was that the maximum density standards in those zones with, if you were meeting those maximum densities, you could not even achieve those maximum heights that are, you know, the city went through that process to adopt those building heights. Um, so that the attempt there was just to kind of make those a little more on par with density and, and building height. And again, we're not proposing to change the building height standards in those zones.
Yeah, it really was to try to create some consistency within the zone to allow for what you are, to make it feasible to allow for what you already allow.
I hear that, I hear that, that word feasible, feasible. I'm going, that lacks the quality of life in our town. And when I see you want to put three dwellings on a 50 by 100 lot or less, and absolutely give no parking off-street or any of that, I see another show showing up in Esticada calling Parking Wars Esticada. Honestly, you talk about putting that many buildings together with no feasible parking on them with your cottages and with your uh, what was the name of that other one? Row houses, basically. I looked at all your pictures here. One from Sandy had a few parking spots in front of their building. The rest of them had no parking for all of their cottage villages. And so I'm thinking, you know, why do we want to look like that when people that are renting apartments or whatever, low income or medium income, they're all going to have two cars. What are they going to do? Stack them on top of each other? Because there's not going to be anybody building parking lots around here.
Is there any, I'm sorry, is there any proposal for any buildings that have zero off-street parking? No. Yeah, I don't think there's anything that has no off-street parking.
The AD, the ADUs for the smaller lots to add to uh, to adjoining houses on a small lot, do not have any reform for having off-street parking.
And that's a state requirement.
You don't have to have any. And I agree with you. It should be a requirement that there should be.
The state will not allow the city to require additional off-street parking for accessory dwelling units. For one, for, for one accessory dwelling unit.
In my opinion, then, we shouldn't allow the accessory unit, because where are they going to park?
You have to allow them per state law. So I don't mean to keep sounding sort of defensive, but.
I agree, I agree with something with what you're saying, but however, here's what I'm saying. Those rules that you're coming in with ADUs is when we hit 10,000, not now.
No, those, those apply to us, those apply to us right now. They apply to any city. I think it's 2,500 population or above. Melanie's had her hand up for a really long time.
Oh, I just want to say, I think you're right. Parking is an issue. I mean, my husband and I shared a car when we were, you know, just two of us are little, little kettos and, but for the most part, if there's two people in a house, there's two cars. And so I think we need to, um, but we need to, like, I didn't think that this was um, deal, I didn't think we were dealing so much with apartments. I mean, I hope that we don't have a bazillion apartments out here either. I would rather see a duplex or a triplex here and there and have things kind of spread out, just how I see Esticada. But I, I think we need to come up like with what the recommendation would be. So if we want to not accept the um, recommendation for parking, because for, I can't remember what it is, for four-plex, I think it's, it was only four spots that was required at all.
Currently, currently a four-plex would. Currently, currently a fourplex would only require four spots because our code is written in a in a weird way that conflicts with itself, whereas currently for a triplex, you need six spots. So that doesn't make sense, right? So what we're proposing is to increase the number for a fourplex uh from four parking spots to five. And then the other plexes, all of the plexes would be, would require one more parking space than the number of units in them. So a duplex would require three units, a triplex would require four, a quadplex would require five.
So I think if there's like recommend, I think we need to nail down like what do you want to recommend? Do you not want to recommend and how we can like come up with the support for that? And that way we can kind of work through what do you have issues with like the nonconforming lot size? I mean, I I actually let you take over that because I don't know how to in an organized way go through each of those. But if we don't want to recommend it, then we should just say this is, we will recommend this with these exceptions and then go down that list, come up with your list of exceptions, I think is what we're trying to do. Okay.
I mean, are, I guess, are we, are we all not wanting to recommend things? I mean, I I agree that we should kind of, we're having these sort of like conversations that are about things that aren't even in the proposal or, you know, I I agree that we should focus on what the actual proposal is and what actual concrete objections or agreements with it are. But it's also, I have to say, it's like, I I've been coming to these meetings for all over a year and I'm often the only idiot who's saying voting no on these like big subdivisions that are going in. And it's like, you know, it's just really frustrating that the first movement that anyone makes to actually have affordable housing in this place, suddenly everyone has all these issues with with growth that are, oh, we don't want, we don't want this in here. We don't want stuff to be paved over in stormwater. It's just like, yeah, neither do I, but like, I I don't want a bunch of apartments or a bunch of single family subdivisions in here. I would like to just look at the woods and fields, but that's not what we've been voting to do. That's also not what we can legally do. And if we're gonna, i- if we're going to have growth, we we need to be accessible to to more people than just the people that can afford these five and six hundred thousand dollar houses. We have, we have to prioritize making the town and living here available to more than one kind of person. We just, we just have to. And and I I just, we can't bring growth to a grinding halt when it, when it becomes about allowing housing that maybe we personally don't need. You know, that's just, we can't just be against apartments, I guess, is what I'm seeing.
Thanks, Sarah. Uh, Didi, go ahead.
There is a triplex on Clubhouse Road, just down the road. Part of it's on beach. It's a triplex. It has parking spaces for everybody. It's on a standard sized lot. Everybody's comfortable there. I personally don't see any reason why we can't put those in other areas in our city. Um, I'm not really excited about the ADUs myself.
But what did you say?
I'm not really excited about ADUs right now, but we do have them. They're up at Reagan Hill Heights. They're in other areas in our community. Uh, they seem to be working. I personally don't think that if we adopt what what we're being asked to adopt here, it's not going to change overnight. It's just going to allow people who have been trying to build homes for middle housing that it just hasn't happened. I think it's too little, too late.
I agree with you in most of that, but what I'm looking at is for twenty some years, we've had a set of six sixteen code book that if the developer came in, they met all them criteria, they were here in half an hour and they were on their way.
We had a meeting last week and there were nineteen conditions on a duplex.
Uh, that was a special occasion. That was, that was something on a special occasion and the only condition was that everybody kind of forgot there was a crick there that needed a driveway for each unit.
So at this point, every duplex that wants to come into town has to follow a set of conditions. If we adopt it, it's already there and they're good to go.
It's it's already, that one is already there as.
I'm talking about future, not that one.
Okay, well, this was a flag lot that they were trying to create. And so that's what brought that up. But those conditions were part of the system. And so we didn't create it just for that one lot. It was always there. And thanks to Ben having built one or two or four. Anyway, um, that's, that was an issue by itself and it took a lot of going through on that particular issue. But we we gave them a an out or an in to facilitate that. What I'm looking at right here is if you put something in here that says, all right, you only need one parking space per unit and you build two hundred and thirty five of them in one strip mall. I'm going to tell you what, it's not going to work. It's not going to work for forty. It's not going to work for twenty.
What what does it actually look like in a multifamily situation?
Currently, the code only requires one off street parking space for multifamily, per multifamily unit. Um, and we're not proposing any reduction to that because that's already low. Yeah. And for, uh, if you're talking about Commonwealth development, the proposal is, I think, currently drafted to require two off street parking spaces unless um, and they would have to request an exemption for one of them. You could reduce that to one if there's enough on street parking. So they would need to identify where the on street parking is, um, and if that street is wide enough to still accommodate two way travel. So they would have to go through a little extra hoop there to get the reduction.
Does that come to us or does that come to you guys as planning staff?
That would probably just be a, that would just be a staff decision, yeah.
So if I heard you right, um, to have off street parking or on street parking, excuse me, you'd need a thirty six foot wide road to make that feasible.
Right.
And I haven't seen one of them in any development yet.
We do have, we do have wider roads than that, but it depends on the classification of the street, so.
But ultimately, in those areas where the roads are not that wide, you would not be able to get that exception. So again, I think that it it's important to kind of focus on what we are and are not recommending. We're not recommending those changes unless there's the ability and the space to to provide a space on the street and only in those certain conditions. We're not recommending changing your off street parking requirements for multifamily. We're actually recommending slightly increasing the requirement for quadplexes and really just reducing the requirements for duplexes and triplexes. We're not recommending any changes to what you require for ADUs in terms of parking. So I do what, just want to be clear about what we are and aren't recommending. And I think we're happy to hear suggested changes to what's being recommended, but that's what we need to hear. Either, you know, you support this generally, but with a specific set of changes or you don't support it and you're want to recommend, not recommend approval to the council um, so that they know what you're recommending, because that is the next step is to take it to council. So we we need to understand what you as a group are recommending to move forward to council or not recommending. So I'm just going to reiterate that and why, you know, what the basis of those decisions or recommendations are. That's kind of where Taylor started this out.
I have a question, but it's not anything really to do with this. On your staff report, you said, and I'm not understanding it, so I might have heard it wrong. Downtown developing, you are you saying that people can build houses on the lower level too?
Currently, currently, these code amendments don't include anything related to what I mentioned at the beginning. Um, we got testimonial, we got a letter in support of adding an amendment into this package, which would, which would allow ground floor residential. So.
What what would be the purpose of that? Isn't, isn't that already residential where you're?
Currently on Broadway and Main Street, you're not allowed to have ground floor like apartments.
That's what I'm thinking here.
Right, right. So so what they're saying is we should change the code to allow ground floor apartments.
But we don't want to do that, do we?
That's, that's the question.
Okay, that brings up another question as to the local motel down here. Should they tear that all down and they've currently got bottom floor apartments? Would they be grandfathered in to rebuild that in a new style?
That is a tricky question and might require a code interpretation by the city council because if basically we would need them to determine whether the existing use is classified as a hotel or motel, which is technically commercial, or would it be classified as residential? Because that's how it's functionally being used. Um, so I don't know the answer on on that exactly, but
Three hundred main would be the same situation, right?
Uh huh. So.
It's not likely they're going to tear that one down and rebuild it, is it?
I I don't.
I don't think so.
I don't think anybody's.
No, but that's a good example of, you know, of an apartment, two story apartments, a city commercial on the bottom and apartments on the top. Three hundred main is exactly that.
If we're to add or adopt something of that nature, how do, how does that look? And they said a, it's just an option. It's a, it would be a variance that goes before planning commission? About a a nonconforming use, I guess it would be or?
Well, that's, so that's something that we could add. So that would be a a code amendment because currently ground floor residential is prohibited in the downtown zone if it's fronting Main Street or Broadway. So that's a code amendment that if the council wants to make it, we should do it with this amendment package because we're already going through the process. It it would make sense topically with what we're talking about because it would fall into the category of, you know, reducing barriers to the development of certain types of housing. So what we would want to do is find out tonight, uh, what the planning commission thinks about that. Include your recommendation in the total package of recommendations for the council. Um, and then the council would decide whether to include that amendment. So if the, if the planning commission is going to recommend including that tonight, um, then what we would do is we would add a section in the draft code amendments, the title sixteen. I think that's exhibit three. Yeah, it is exhibit three. Um, so we would add a section in there that would be in the downtown zone. So chapter sixteen point two six and we would amend that to remove the language that prohibits ground floor commercial from fronting Main Street and or Broadway. You could decide to allow it on Main, but keep it prohibited on Broadway. You know, there's flexibility there.
When you think about Main Street, Main Street's really pretty short down here. It was, it's really just, like you said, McCray's Motel. There's also a vacant lot right there that could affect pretty much, I mean, it, other things could come down and be rebuilt, but they're not as likely. If it was just on Main, if I'm interpreting that correctly.
I, I guess I'm, I kind of am. Well, I I'm really, I would be really against taking, I I mean, I think our downtown is its own problem and and we need more functional commercial spaces downtown. I love the idea of of something with a commercial building or commercial space on the ground floor and apartments on top of it on any of those streets. I don't see any benefit to, we already, we already have a bunch of businesses downtown that you can't actually patronize because they're just an insurance, you know, there, there's, there's something that you, somebody goes to there once a year or something. We we need a functional downtown. We need like, you know, restaurants and more shops that people can go to. I I I'm surprised to, to, that that's something that that is being considered. I mean, what, what's really the, what's the benefit of it? Is is having to have a commercial space in the ground floor and being allowed to develop residential above it? Is that, is that a huge issue? It 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 doesn't seem like it to me.
It limits some types of funding, I think, that could be.
Yeah, for example, like federal, um, and probably other sources of funding for affordable housing projects will often require the development to be entirely residential in order for them to qualify for the grant funds. Um, that's just one of many.
And also as a struggles related to commercial.
Recent history, residential is far easier to uh, keep rented out than commercial.
Yeah, sure, but that won't be the case for long. When, when, you know, once there's ten thousand people in this town, I I don't know. It just, i- i- if we're talking about doing things like encouraging people to not drive if we, if we're, if we don't have any businesses anywhere that people can go to, they have to drive to Happy Valley and and we we are just establishing that we have these other spaces that people can put these kinds of buildings in. Why would we, why would we then also try to put them in the downtown if there's all these other space? I guess I I I'm just, yeah, I'm just really confused by this and.
Well, the the subject property that got brought up, I would love to have a four story pretty residential building that looked nice versus what we have currently. Or a bare lot or
Sure.
A a vacant commercial building with three stories of residential above it. So I mean, I I guess it's all a matter of personal opinion on what we want to look at, but I I there's a lot of things that could improve said property.
I'll just add briefly that I think it really is a policy issue and you guys are kind of talking about the policy issue and the sort of desire for what you were, you want to see in in that commercial area. But from a sort of practical development standpoint, particularly if it's developed by a a developer of affordable housing or a nonprofit organization, they ultimately typically end up managing the property. And it's very challenging for them to have to manage. And as was mentioned ago, rent a commercial space on the ground floor. And so it's kind of tends to be a deal breaker for specific organizations who are trying to develop that form of housing in specific locations. So I'm not saying this to try to convince you one way or the other, just to kind of say that's the reason that they're asking for this is because if they are required to have a ground floor, commercial or retail space, likely they, they often, I don't know about these guys in particular, but often the developer just simply wouldn't be able to move forward with the project. So I think that's the 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 reason. Um, but I think you're all right. You know, it's like, it's a, it's a policy discussion or decision about whether or not that's okay. You know, do the, the, does that outweigh the cons of not having that active retail space on the ground floor in that area? So.
Taylor, so what we need to do is we need suggestions to the changes that we want to make, right?
That's right.
Okay, so so somebody make a list or or write it down?
Do we, do we want to run this like a normal meeting where we open it up for public hearing and then we go back in and we vote on something and approve, adopt the conditions as listed that are laid out, not conditions, I guess, wouldn't be conditions, recommendations? And then any changes at that point in time? Or do we want to keep a running list or how best, what's the best way to do this?
Yeah, Matt, were you going to say something?
Well, I was just going to say, at your last public hearing, you took public testimony and you closed the public hearing. You've closed the public testimony portion of the hearing. So I think the assumption was you'd come back tonight, you deliberate amongst yourselves, someone would make a motion. And then you would discuss the motion and determine whether or not the motion moved forward. And the motion, again, there's sort of three options for you. One is you recommend approval of the proposed amendments to the comp plan and the code as presented. Um, two, you recommend approval with changes and you identify those specific changes in the rationale for those changes tonight. Or you recommend not to approve by the city council. And then that recommendation, one way or the other, goes to city council and they deliberate and they make a decision. So, you know, tonight, yeah, it's like if you want to recommend changes, tonight's the night. Identify that list of changes so that staff can formalize that and take it to to council for their, their decision. And yeah, Taylor, I'm sure you might have some stuff to add, but that's, that's, I think, the crux of the, the action tonight.
So, yeah, I don't know if this would be out of order, but if you want to throw out some of the changes that are desired among individual commissioners, um, I can keep a list of those and then, um, I think that would help you just work from there to decide which of those changes you all or enough of you agree on in order to. Just work from there to decide which of those changes you all or enough of you agree on in order to pass a motion.
Okay.
That works. So my question is, are we gonna talk about each and every recommendation that's on this? Current cheese.
I don't think we have to read it word for word.
No, but, but.
Issues, then yeah, I would say.
Bring up a topic issue and.
Yeah, only the ones that you have, you have conflict with. Or concern about, really.
So I have a question about multi-dwelling apartments as opposed to duplexes or triplexes. Those are gonna be. Coming through just as any other piece of property would be coming through for development. And we would individually at those meetings choose to accept or not accept. What they're asking.
You would only. A multifamily development would only come to the planning commission if it were a conditional use in the underlying zone. Um, and I. I can't remember off the top of my head if we are newly allowing multifamily as a conditional use anywhere.
So if we have any R three zones and somebody wanted to build an apartment on an R three zone. They could do that outright, we wouldn't know a thing about it until they started putting.
Right.
Studs up.
They just submit building permits, yep.
Whereas the difference between this and that duplex situation last week was that was an R one lot, right? They're trying to do a partition and there were just a lot of moving parks that needed a process, kind of broken down, so. And the, the duplex are allowed on the R one, but only one is allowed on R one.
Duplexes are not allowed outright currently in the R one zone.
Sorry, that's right, it's R two.
So that's why, so that's why that was the conditional use part of that application. Which is a separate request from the partition, but.
Okay, so how do we want to go about this, ladies and gentlemen?
I mean, do you have changes? Or, or things that you would like to discuss?
Well, yeah, I. Read this twice now over the past month. And, uh. So let's start, get, get your hot button, your top one off, off your chest, Richard, come on.
It isn't a top one, I'd like to go through individual ones as they go right down the list rather than pick a piecemeal here. There's some of them that are perfectly acceptable and others that are. Left, left the common sense at home.
Like go through the code and the policy amendments of those pages, each one by one?
How many is there? About nine hundred and sixteen?
No.
Sick, the.
Which page did we start on?
The development code amendments are sixty-two pages long. And the comprehensive plan amendments are eleven pages long. Both of these are just summarized into their categories in part two of the staff report. Um, so that's gonna be the easier probably document to walk through. Part two of the staff report starts on page fifteen of the packet or page seven of the staff report.
Yeah, I, I guess I have another question, um, regarding the, uh, Main Street. Residential, I'm not for right, the Main Street residential on the main floor. Is that some, I don't remember reading that, is that's just the paperwork that the gentleman?
That's, that's a new.
Okay, so we don't even have to look at that, do we?
You don't have to.
Okay.
I would, I would move for not, we already have this thing and the marijuana thing and it's eight and I would, maybe we could talk about that one at a. At a different time and just kind of get through what we have, would that be okay with people?
It'll probably go to the count, be asked of the council though at this.
It will still, it will still be. Disclosed and presented to the council as an option, they will still be allowed to consider including that in the amendment. Um, but the planning commission does not have to make any recommendation either way on that.
So I, I got a question on that since we're talking about it. And in the light of recent fires, say a fire comes and burns down McCray's tomorrow. And they want to rebuild residential there. Are we gonna sit here and we're gonna tell them they can't build, rebuild residential?
That's what I mean by, it's a weird situation where I think we would need a code interpretation by the council because I, being staff, would not be comfortable. Saying. One way or the other. Legally.
Why?
Whereas the council can do a code interpretation for that kind of thing.
To, to make it simple, can we just put any existing housing? Uh, or ground floor housing on Main Street? Would be.
Could be replaced.
Could be replaced.
You, you could. Or the council could.
Cause I'm really talking about two.
On the main floor.
What?
Are you talking about with commercial on the main?
No, I'm saying put in residential the whole.
The whole way.
The whole way.
If it's residential now, residential use now.
On the ground floor.
On the ground floor that you could. Replace it with the same.
Or do we, do we want to force these people to go through, jump through a bunch of hoops, and I, I'm not saying there's gonna be fire, but it's a, it's a likely. Scenario we're familiar with. Or say three hundred main, like we don't want to use McCray's.
Right.
Cause this, this, the intent of everything here is to produce. Opportunities for developers and, and to get these middle housing types or these alternative housing types in our single family homes. And those are both prime examples. One of them's a pretty much an outright low. Low-cost housing and the other one is, I don't know the. Correct terminology, but it's similar. Um, so we're gonna. Not allow it because the code says we can't allow it and we're gonna make them do commercial. Where they could just walk, is whatever funding's available or not available. Couldn't, could not be available for the next time around.
Couldn't they propose, couldn't this particular project at this particular lot propose? An exception to that rather than us changing what is allowed on the entire street? There would need to be, uh, they would need to meet the criteria for a variance. Because the code explicitly prohibits that use there.
Could you make it a conditional use? So they have to come back to the council, their.
I might call on Kate to talk a little bit more about this if there are questions, but, um, this, the state. I think in twenty seventeen adopted new requirements for cities to only apply. Quote, clear and objective standards to the development of housing, um, and so technically. Um, no types of housing should be conditional uses because conditional uses are, there's more discretion. In their approval. So we wouldn't want to, and that doesn't mean we need to necessarily overhaul the entire code, although probably eventually we should. Make sure to clean that up.
Comfortable, if they're not, if you're not comfortable or four of you are not comfortable with. The ground for residential and you should not recommend it. To the council, but if four of you are. Then.
And maybe four of you are more comfortable with allowing. New ground floor residential if it's replacing existing gra- ground floor residential like Ben was just. I don't know.
I like those sounds of that last part.
I do, I enjoy that thought.
We're really talking about two prob, or properties.
I'm not comfortable with ground floor residential downtown.
Will you put it on your list to just input a question mark by it? Okay, moving on.
We would, we need more business downtown. We need to create that core so that people want to come there. Hopefully we'll get restaurants. Maybe we'd have a theater one day.
And I think there's plenty of places to put that kind of. Um, multi-family housing and that's not directly downtown on our Main Street.
I'd argue that one of the nicest buildings downtowns is a fourplex.
And that was replacing, and that was replacing a little, small little house, right? That used to be there.
But that's not on Main Street, it's on a.
It's in the downtown zone. It's, it's irrelevant, it's, it's just a personal comment.
That's nice, that is nice.
Okay. So, we, we need to start going through this or else.
Would it be helpful for me to walk? Down through the, the list of types of development code amendments here in order? I'm starting on page eight of the.
Yes, let's do that. You want, you want, you want to go through it or you want me to go through it, whatever works?
I can go through it.
Okay.
So underneath facilitate missing middle housing. Um, the first type of code amendment underneath that larger category is permitting middle housing types outright. So this is allowing duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters. And common wall dwellings outright, so you, they wouldn't have to go through the conditional use process. Um, allowing it outright in the R one. And C two zones, um, I think it would also be. Allowed outright and it would be allowed outright anywhere where existing, um. Where single family homes are allowed outright, so that would also include the R two zone, um, North City residential zone. Kate, please feel free to chime in. So yeah, any concerns about allowing those middle housing types wherever single family homes are also allowed?
I have a question. Would it be easier just to eliminate R one and change everything to R two?
Um, no, not for the purpose of this process because that would be a zone change and. Um. There are different requirements related to. Zone changes. Procedurally.
Density standard changes and the lot. Coverage changes and everything else, effectively we're eliminating R one.
But the lot sizes aren't changing there, right?
The lot sizes are proposed to change for duplexes to be the same minimum lot size. It, the seventy-five hundred square foot is still the minimum lot size in the R one zone, but currently. Um, we require seventy-five hundred for a single family home, but eight thousand for a duplex, which. Is pretty, a pretty minor difference, but. Um, so we're proposing to make that the same minimum lot size for single family and duplexes. Um, and then it's a little larger for triplexes and todplexes.
Okay, I'll, I'll retract that last one, sorry.
Good idea though. Thinking outside the box.
Okay.
Okay.
So any concern, yeah.
How does everybody feel about that so far? I don't have a problem, okay.
I'm good.
Tara, where'd you get so far? Okay, go ahead, continue on there.
The next is reducing minimum lot sizes for middle housing, so not reducing minimum lot sizes for single family homes. Just for those types, so like I was just saying, duplexes would have a. Five hundred foot, square foot decrease, um, to be the same. Minimum lot size of single family homes, so that would be different in the R two zone where the minimum lot size for a single family is five thousand. So it'd be the same for a duplex there, um, same in the North City residential zone. Um, so it's just whatever the minimum lot size for a single family is, same for a duplex. Um, and then triplexes, fourplexes, common walls. Um. They differ slightly between zones, I think, depending on the zone, like the R one zone, uh, will require larger lot sizes for those. Um, but those would be streamlined in the other, uh, slightly denser zones. And I don't have on the top of my head what those minimum lot sizes are, but we could pull them up.
Just to clarify, Taylor, the, for. Triplexes, fourplexes, common wall and cottage cluster. The proposal is really pretty consistent between the residential zones, it's twenty-five hundred square feet per unit. Um, so it would scale up depending on the number of units.
For administrative purposes. What's the difference between a duplex and an attached ADU?
An attached ADU must be nine hundred square feet or smaller unless it's a basement unit and then it can be twelve hundred square feet. Um, and otherwise, there's no difference.
And there's no benefit permitting wise going one way or another?
Not if they're both allowed outright.
Okay, perfect.
Well. If you, if you can. If you can meet the definition of an ADU, then you don't have to provide an extra parking space.
Okay.
So that's all me.
We're clipping right along, let's go to C.
So increasing allowed density is the next one. Um, this is both. Currently, we regulate density using mini- minimum lot size rather than, um, lot size per. Uh, dwelling unit, um. And this is especially complicated for calculating the multifamily area, so we're both changing this to. Um, make the calculation easier for staff and. Um, applicants, um, and to, uh, yeah, reduce the amount of land that's needed for those. Um. Projects with more units basically that are, uh, currently are lot size requirements. Make it really difficult, nearly impossible to develop a lot of those types of housing.
Maybe I missed this, but if I heard you right, you're gonna say you're, for every person in the. Apartment or whatever gets so many square feet.
No, it, it's not based on how many people, it's, um. It's a number of, so for multifamily, we would be calculating it based on number of units per acre, so there would be a maximum. Number of units that you can put on a given lot based on what the size of the lot is.
So let's say we got an acre. How many units are we allowed?
It depends on the zone. So we could go in.
C two, that's a hard one.
I, I don't have these memorized, I can, if you want me to search through the document, I can do that. Okay.
What, what is the, you remember the high bound?
In the C two.
Higher.
Um. The highest allowed density in the city?
Yeah.
I don't know off the top of my head, I feel like it might be thirty units per acre, but I'm not sure.
Is that, is that asking about the proposed changes or the existing code?
Proposed changes.
Proposed change, well, I think the highest would be in the mixed use zones, um. And I think it was fifty units per acre in the mill area mixed use in the central mixed use zones. Um, in the R three multifamily zone, I believe it's thirty units per acre.
That's what I'm thinking.
That's, that's the maximum number is what you're giving us.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. Doesn't he have to provide parks too? They'll pay a park as DC or identify a park in their development. Yeah. Are we okay with that? Effectively? So far?
Just when I found it in the documents, um, and Kate was right, it's thirty.
Okay.
Um, okay. So increasing allowed density, reducing barriers to housing development, um, so this. For example, um. Reducing front setbacks in the R two and R three zones from twenty feet to fifteen feet. But keeping the twenty-foot setback for garages, um, this. Is already a standard that exists in our code in the North City residential, mill area mixed use and central mixed use zones. Um, so you have the, yeah, fifteen-foot setback, but the garage has to be set back at least. Or if it's a carport, that has to be set back at least twenty feet from the front. So that's one barrier, um. Another barrier for common wall development specifically is that the maximum allowable lot coverage is currently fifty-five percent. Um, but common wall dwellings because of the way that they obviously take up the whole, usually the whole width of the lot. Um. Raising that maximum allowable lot coverage to seventy percent is what. Uh, we're proposing to make it more feasible to develop those, otherwise you probably would just need either a really wide common wall home or. Um, a really long lot for it to go on in order to not take up more than fifty-five percent of the lot.
So if I heard you just right. You say we can put buildings on seventy percent of the total land on the lot.
Only for common wall dwellings.
For common wall.
That one.
Well, I mean, you're not gonna put a garage on any of that anyway.
I think some common wall, yeah, a lot of common wall developments are doing garages. Um, it, it just depends, you could put a garage there, you know.
If the lot's deep enough, you can do that.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay. I'm pretty cool with that.
Shepherded along, alright, um, establishing minimum density requirements, so. Um. In the zones that we, that we have, uh, where we are intending for denser development to happen. Um, we're proposing minimum density requirements to make sure that that is where the denser development goes. Um, and so this, uh, when we discussed this with like the advisory committee and, um, council, it sounded like. The fifty percent minimum density requirement was, um, the preferred kind of lower end, and so that means that. Um, if you have, for example, in the R three zone, you have a maximum allowable density of thirty units per acre. The minimum density requirement would say, okay, you, you can't go denser than. You have a maximum allowable density of thirty units per acre, the minimum density requirement would say, okay, you, you can't go denser than that. And you have to go at least half that density. So you would have to develop at least fifteen units if you were developing an acre. Which is not very dense.
And just to declare or to add some nuance to, um, Taylor's description. Well, for one thing, I think this would only apply in the R three and in the sort of mixed use zone, so not in R one or R two. And it would only apply if you're proposing a subdivision, so you're creating four or more lots. And, or only if you are proposing multifamily development. So it wouldn't apply to kind of smaller scale. If you just wanted to build some units on an existing lot or just a partition, um, it wouldn't apply in those cases. Just if you're subdividing land or doing multifamily.
So if you wanted to have a larger, like I wanted to have my house on an acre and a half. I, since I'm not developing it, I could do that.
Yeah, right, um, yeah, correct, yeah.
If a lot's currently R three, can they rezone to R two?
If the council approves their zone change.
So the whole intent of this minimum lot density is to make sure that we're developing multifamily to its fullest extent.
Or at least to some extent, yeah.
And, and I think that's been part of the problem with, why we don't see the R or any multifamily is because it generally. Gets overlooked for R one, R two. I don't think we've seen very many R, changes from R three to down there, but, but if we're trying to enforce a minimum density, should we then say? Somehow that if it's R, if it's currently in the comp plan as a R three zone, they can't go down to R two because then they're outside of that minimum effectively. The minimum density standard. And I don't want to overcomplicate things, but if that's the intent of what we're doing here is to, to increase density in the dense zones.
I don't know how, I don't know if it would be legal for the city to prohibit someone from. Requesting and having, and having approved a zone change if they meet all the criteria for a zone change. And the council wanted to approve the zone change, like the council. Yeah, it's, it's ultimately up to the council whether to approve a zone change, I guess I'll just.
Your idea of R three going to an R two, like, um, why would somebody do that?
Well, take any one of the single family builders up here that just keeps slamming houses in and is doing well at it. They're, they're not gonna change the multifamily just to change the multifamily. So they, if they had a plot of ground, like for instance, the pieces on Deuce Road and. Eagle Creek Highway, if we, if we brought those in with the intent of putting multifamily on there, which I, I don't know if that's specifically a zone or three, is that Taylor? On the corner there?
Up on Deuce?
On the, on the corner of Deuce and River Mill?
Oh, that's, um, North City Residential.
Okay, so if, if, if they said we're gonna put two hundred sixty-nine units of multifamily in there. But then they go, oh, three years down the road, we're not doing that, we're gonna put single families on there. The, the portion of this that said, that has the minimum density, the whole reason we're doing that is to prevent that switcheroo.
Yeah, and current.
Oh, it's alright.
Currently, they, they wouldn't be allowed to do that anyway because within two hundred feet of Eagle Creek Road. Um, it's already prohibited to build a new single family home unless you're replacing an existing one.
Okay.
Anything else on the minimum density? The next is promoting accessory dwelling units. So the first one under here is to allow two ADUs in conjunction with a single family dwelling. So we already permit, we have to permit one ADU, um, on a lot with a single family. We also already do permit one ADU on a lot with a duplex. Um, so permitting two ADUs with a single family home, that would be the same, that would result in the same number of units as permitting. An ADU with a duplex, um, and this amendment is also proposing. Currently would require one of the ADUs to be attached or internal to the primary dwelling. Um, just to kind of, yeah, reduce the perceived impacts or real impacts of having, you know, three separate. Um, structures potentially on a lot.
So if I just heard you, you said you can add two nine hundred square foot ADUs.
Current, uh. That's what is being proposed, is that you could have two ADUs. And if one was internal, like right now, our code allows for an ADU to be larger than nine hundred square feet. It can be up to twelve hundred if it's a basement unit.
Basement, but that's the only exception.
Right.
The rest of them will have to be nine hundred foot or less.
Right.
Okay. I think we're doing great, let's keep going.
Okay, removing, uh, the next one is removing off-street parking requirements for the first ADU. This is required by state law, um, if the city does permit two ADUs. Like we just talked about in the, the last one, um, which is not required by state law. Then we do have the authority to require a second parking space for that, or to require a parking space for that second ADU. So that is included currently in the proposal.
So you just said that it will have a, a parking space.
The second.
For the second one, but the third.
There's no third one, but not the first ADU.
Oh, okay, alright. So grandma can still have one car, right?
The first one don't have a parking.
Right.
The second one does, they get home first, they take that spot, right? Gotcha.
I'll let them deal with that.
Fear some dog.
I hope they live up to it then.
They could get smart cars and they could both fit.
Next one is allowing lot coverage exceptions for ADUs, so, um. The current lot coverage standard is usually fifty-five percent, um, which could prevent ADU development on some lots. So, um, there's an exception proposed on, only on lots that are five thousand square feet or smaller. Um, in order to facilitate the development of ADUs. And we also note that other, um, other existing zones don't even have lot coverage standards. So this, this only applies in the R one, R two and R three zone.
They still have to abide by setbacks though, right?
Yes, yeah.
Which is reduced down for ADUs from, uh, the normal residential building. Isn't that right?
The rear, yeah, that's the, that's item E on here, um, is. Allowing a reduced. Uh, so reducing it down, the rear setback for a detached ADU, reduce it to five feet if it's a one-story ADU. Um, but only reduce it to eight feet for a two-story ADU so that you don't have, um, such a tall building. Only five feet from the rear line.
And I think we increased that to ten feet actually after, after we heard from the advisory committee.
Question, does that, does that also permit these, uh, mini houses that are being built in Salem? That they drive out here and set them up?
It, they would have to meet all of the de- development standards, um. That are in our code for like a permanent structure and they'd have to go through the whole building permit, um, process.
Even if they're four hundred square feet or whatever, that's, yeah, we don't have, still have to meet that requirement.
Uh-huh, and we don't have a minimum square footage requirement for a dwelling. So if someone wants to live in something that's small, they can, they could do that, yeah. If they're meeting all of the other development standards.
Question on the zero, uh, foot rear setback, if the detached ADU is converted from existing structure. Like a garage on an alleyway, right?
Yeah.
So if it's zero lot line, who's, who's managing, I, and I assume the building department is. That if it's a zero lot line structure on the property line, that it's built to zero outline standards as far as firewall and all.
Right, yeah, the firewall, that's all building.
So that's, that's the cutoff right there then, that's the clean handoff. You guys allow it, they have to facilitate.
Yep, they make sure it's.
So the next, the next door neighbor next to that zero lot line can't build one right next to it.
It's probably gonna be on an alleyway, but if not, they would have to build up next to it with a similar firewall.
Yeah.
And they wouldn't be, so this would be for existing structures.
Alright, right.
Um, so we wouldn't be permitting new structures to the encroach into the setback. But if there's an existing, so this is really mostly just applies to like really old properties that, or, you know, maybe they. Um, were built when they were still under the county jurisdiction, but they've since annexed. Or they were built before we even adopted these setbacks, right? So.
Nineteen ten.
We wouldn't be permitting new structures to encroach, but the existing ones, they could convert, not expand, but convert.
Okay. I get, here we go.
Um, okay, uh, the one that we skipped over is providing clear and objective design standards for ADUs. Um, and so the proposal includes amendments that remove some discretionary language about the design standards. Um, and just making sure that we're not applying discretionary design standards to ADUs that we aren't. Also applying to regular, uh, you know, single family residential development. Um, the next one is streamlining or reducing off-street parking requirements, okay. So, um, let's see. The proposed standards for duplex, triplex and fourplex, um, basically reduce the requirement from two spaces per unit. Except for fourplexes, um, to approximately one and a half spaces per unit. Um, so like I said, that comes out to. One more unit or one more parking space than the numbers of units in the plex. So duplex has three unit, or, sorry, duplex has three spaces, uh, triplex has four, quadplex has five. Currently, a quadplex is only required to have four, doesn't make sense. Um, and then for common wall dwellings, um, the proposed standard is, um. This also, I think, didn't get updated because the proposal is two spaces now with that optional exception. If there's enough on-street parking and if the, um, street is wide enough to accommodate two-way travel. With one side being parking.
I have a question. For the triplex, wouldn't it may, wouldn't they have to have five spaces? Cause one and a half times three spaces is four and a half, so would you round up or do you round down?
That's why, so, um. I wrote this as approximately one and a half space per unit, it's, the, the code doesn't provide that as the calculation.
Okay.
The code provides just the number.
Specific number.
Yeah, so that's not exactly the right calculation there.
Can't provide a half a space.
Motorcycle space. Um, and then there are also exceptions to parking requirements. For internal conversions of single family homes, um, into duplexes or triplexes or quadplexes. Um, by reducing the number of required parking spaces compared to new development. Um, but still in those cases, each unit would require at least one space per unit.
We're good on the parking?
Kind of.
Good inch.
Kind of, uh, the one thing I didn't hear anything about was green spaces and or playgrounds.
Green spaces?
In these apartment complexes. Not all of them are gonna have kids, but I can guarantee at least one or more will.
I think we were talking about apartment complexes right now.
There aren't any, there are no changes to the current off-street parking requirements for multifamily.
But it, to answer his question, are we changing anything with green spaces or park requirements or anything like that with this change?
Oh, like park space, no.
Okay.
There would, yeah.
So, so each, each community of whatever is built, still gonna have the same amount of, of place to walk your dog and.
Um, there's a.
Roll your kids in the grass and that kind of stuff.
I don't think our code really provides for any guarantee around that, other than there's the minimum. Uh, you know, minimum lot size requirement and.
Well, for.
Um, there are landscapes.
The reason I ask that, we have X amount of green space for all of our commercial, uh, properties. And then we're, we're reducing our setbacks for our buildings on these lots, which takes away from your mowing grass or whatever. If we're really doing away with backyards or whatever. So i- is there any replacement for that required on any of these lots?
There's no change to any of the, um, minimum landscaping requirements that do exist in several of our zones. We're not proposing any changes to this.
We don't really require parks to be constructed in.
Our code is very weak on parks.
It is weak, you guys can make a recommendation on that or we could revisit it.
Well, let's call it a green space then.
You know, I mean, I don't know if tonight is the night, right night to do that, but that might be something that you guys wanna take on in the future. Um, because it is, it's vague.
And I would just add that in the R three zone, which is the main multifamily zone. That does have a maximum lot coverage requirement of fifty-five percent of the lot. So that means, you know, the remainder would, doesn't necessarily have to be green space per se, but it can't be building at least.
Thank you.
Anything else on off-street parking? Okay, the next one is facilitating the development of non-conforming lots. Um, and so currently in the R one zone, there's a, there's a, uh, a bit that prohibits. Um, construction of, uh, any dwellings on lots under five thousand square feet. Um, so we're proposing to remove that. There are plenty of lots in the city that were platted long before we adopted any development code. Um, so you'll have like four thousand square foot lots, um, that exist in the R one zone that are prohibited by that. Section from being developed, um, and so, yeah, remove that, um, prohibition. And, um, establish new standards related to undersized lots or non-conforming lots. To make sure that they can be developed as long as all of the other, uh, development standards are met, so they still have to meet the setbacks. Um, off-street parking, infrastructure standards, all of the other standards would need to be met. It's just that they can now develop the slot.
I completely disagree with that one. Because I have a five thousand square foot. Now you're saying four thousand?
If, if the four thousand lot, four thousand square foot lot existed when your lot was developed, it was right next to it.
It is.
This would now change it to say that that four thousand square foot lot could be.
See, I, I just, number one, it's a personal reason for me, but the main thing is. I have a five thousand dollar square. Five, oh yeah, I wish. Um, I got five, five thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Probably. Okay, and you made a comment, but don't you want the yard way back? And, yeah, there's no yard for five thousand, sorry, um. So why would we go smaller?
The building setbacks would still be the same. So say your lot's fifty by a hundred and that lot's forty by a hundred. They're still gonna have a five yard, a five foot side yard setback, a twenty on the front and a twenty on the back, just like your house. So it's gonna have the same amount of yard.
Well, it's gonna be a smaller house.
A smaller house and their whole house is all.
Smaller footprint, right.
I, I'm just gonna jump in with sort of some of the rationale for this. This is a pretty common thing that most cities do, and the reason they do it is because. If somebody's in a residential area, they have a lot, it's a little smaller than your regular minimum lot size. But if you don't allow any kind of home there, um, you can run into issues with being sued. For what's called a takings claim, because if you're not allowing any kind of development on that lot. Then you are essentially taking the economic use or value of the property. Um, if there's no other sort of thing they can do with that lot other than having it just kind of sit there vacant. Um, there's been a number of court cases that actually kind of a national level and it all filters down to the state and local level. Um, and cities get, can get sued if they don't allow.
The city, how does the city get sued if the homeowner don't want, don't want it?
If the, if the person who owns the lot, um, wants to develop something on that lot and, and the city doesn't allow.
And he doesn't, so.
So if the city doesn't allow any development on that lot, um, there's basically no kind of economic. Um, value left in the lot, and so then the property owner who owns that smaller lot. Um, can sue the city if otherwise, you know, it would be physically feasible to develop something there. But your regulation says now you, you can't do that. So I'm just tell, I'm just telling you why most cities allow for this thing that we're proposing. It's mostly to kind of keep them out of trouble. It doesn't mean that somebody's automatically going to develop that lot. It just means that you get.
But you open it up.
Right.
So I disagree with it, so.
And that's fine. I'm just telling you what the rationale is.
Right. And it's pretty consistent with Clagmas counties too, that if they don't allow any new lots under four thousand square foot for that instance, but any existing lot. You're allowed to.
Yeah, almost every city I'm aware of in Oregon allows this to occur for the reasons I stated.
Okay.
And then the other thing to note under the non-conforming lot category is that, um, the proposal currently also includes allowing duplexes. And two-unit, I think just two-unit common wall dwellings, um, which would have to have a lower. Lot area per unit requirement, um, on those non-conforming lots, um, and. Just a note about that is that, um, if we allow single-family homes on non-conforming lots. Um, then once our population reaches ten thousand, um, we will be required to also allow duplexes. Or two-unit common walls on those same lots. So, um, yeah, this proposal will just go ahead and do that. They would still have to meet all the setbacks. So those would be probably a pretty small duplex, you know, they'd still have to provide all the minimum parking and everything like that. So.
Yeah.
That is the end of the development code. Categories. We did it.
What's next?
Well, the other, um, piece of this, and this is something that, um. We didn't hear a lot of. Concerns from y'all about, but we can go through it if you want to, um, are the comprehensive plan policy amendments. So it sounded like most of the concerns were with the development code amendments, you know, development standards, what uses are allowed where. Um, whereas the comp plan amendments are much more, um. High level kind of, yeah, their policies. Um, and so that's on page seven. Of, so the first page of the part two of the staff report that's in front of you guys. Um, and so there's a list there from A to. A to J, um, of what those policy updates include, if we want to go through those real quick.
Sorry, what page are you on Taylor?
Um, page fifteen of the packet. Page seven of the staff report, which is part two of the staff report. And so this is the first item under part two of the staff report. I had skipped ahead to the second item, which is the development code amendments. Um, because those are what we heard most concerns about. But the comprehensive plan amendments, um, so the comp plan amendments include. Adopting the findings of the, um, housing needs analysis, so. Basically that analysis, um, serves as an updated existing conditions section to our comprehensive plan. Uh, housing chapter, um, so it describes the current conditions. And what that population projection and the need, housing need projection looks like at the time of adoption. Um, we did update that, um. That, uh, section to rec, expressly recognize that, um, that population projection is likely low. You know, uh, they conducted the alternate analysis to recognize that the growth rate is probably going to be much higher than that PSU. Projection that we are required to use, um. So, but then when we get into the goal and objective section, um, and the policies, that's where we're really talking about. What changes do we want to make to, um, the legislative and reg, regulatory parts of the comp plan? So that's what these, uh, this list of policies is about. And I can just march right down on if that works best.
Yeah.
So the first one is to update policy number one to generally encourage a variety of housing types and densities throughout the city. In order to meet the identified needs. So those needs would be identified in our housing needs analysis. Ideally, we will be updating our housing needs analysis regularly to account for. You know, the growth that ends up happening, um, and we'll be able to look back on this analysis, for example, and say, oh, we did grow faster than we thought or. Oh, or not. Um, the second one is to replace policy number two. Um, to generally encourage a wider range of rental and ownership opportunities. Specifically middle housing types such as plexes, common wall dwellings and cottage clusters. Um, accessory dwelling units and other non-single family types. The next one is to update policy number three to coordinate with other jurisdictions on addressing shared housing issues. So that's kind of recognizing that housing issues are obviously don't end at city limits. Um, so we should be coordinating. As much as we can. The next one is.
Page twenty-three, oh, sorry, part two. Might have got it.
And if, yeah, um, so I'm, I'm reading out of my list that's summarizing these comprehensive plan policy amendments. But if you want to look at the amendments themselves, those are in exhibit two. Is that true? Yes.
Yeah, I can't find it. I don't know why.
And we didn't, we did not print those out, um. If you want, I could. I could pull them up on the screen. Oh, he has the packet that was printed out for the original hearing. Okay. Um, we would not have changed the exhibit number.
This is the one with sixty-two pages you're speaking of.
The comprehensive plan amendments are eleven pages long. The development code amendments are sixty-two pages.
Yeah, here. See, this is eleven. Yeah.
They printed this one out today. There's so many papers over here.
You guys picked the hardest committee to be on. Lots of reading.
I'm on page one.
All right. All right, here we go. Round C.
Okay, so if you are looking at the, um. Comprehensive plan amendment document, which is exhibit two, then you're going to want to go all the way to page ten of that document. Which is where it shows how we're proposing to amend the policies. And the policies are really the meat of your comprehensive plan chapter. They are what. Um, guides and regulates, you know, what the city. Ends up doing. Um, okay, so I think I was on number four of that, which is adding a policy that, um. Recognizes the city's obligation to comply with the Fair Housing Act. Um, there's no change to the next policy in here. Policy number six, um. Which is, whi- which will become policy number seven, would encourage the maintenance and development of manufactured and factory-built dwellings. As lower-cost alternatives to stick-built, single-family homes.
I have a question. In reading today's stuff that you gave me, it prohibits anything under a thousand square feet for a manufactured home to be put on any lot. Is what I heard. Or what I read.
I believe our existing standards for manufactured homes prohibit. Uh, I actually, I'm, I'm not sure off the top of my head.
I think that's right, Taylor, and that's, that's actually a common standard in a lot of cities that used to actually be authorized in state statute. Um, things like requiring a minimum floor area of a thousand square feet. And requiring like a minimum roof pitch and certain standards for siding materials. And just this year, um, the state legislature passed a new house bill. That actually removed all of those authorized, authorized standards and said that. Local governments can't apply special standards to manufactured homes that don't apply to site-built, single-family homes. So that's why those are, are removed from the code is because they're no longer kind of compliant with state law.
So my, uh, thirty-two by twenty-seven mobile home wouldn't be allowed in this city if I annexed in.
You could annex it in. The city just wouldn't permit the, the new placement of something. That didn't meet the, I mean, that, I think that sounds like something that would be allowed if, if it could be allowed as a. As a single-family home, then it has to be allowed. If it, if it meets all of the other development standards of a single-family home, then the city has to allow it. We just can't. Um, impose extra requirements or restrictions on manufactured homes that don't also apply to single-family homes.
Yeah, it's got the three twelve and everything else is just a short double-wide.
Yeah, so this is removing restrictions from the code, not adding restrictions to the code.
So you're welcome now.
Well, as I, as I understood this when I read it, it said it had to be a thousand square foot or more.
Hey, I don't think that's the intent of the amendment. It's not to restrict things further with those types of, um, homes.
Okay, well, that's not.
Pardon?
Where, where did you see that?
Uh, it was in some of this reading that you gave, you know, Cerning. Mobile home and it's at the bottom of one of these pages here. Yeah, pillow two. I haven't read so much stuff.
But for this, for the sake of time, can we try to?
Let's move on.
Somebody search for it and then we can circle back to it here in a minute.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um. The next one, we're removing an outdated policy, uh. Number eight, which was directing the city to adopt development code amendments pursuant to the downtown and Riverside area plan, which was in two thousand and eleven. We already adopted those amendments. Um, updating policy number ten to encourage. Not only through the urban renewal agency, but through any other appropriate avenue. To encourage the maintenance and restoration of existing and especially affordable housing stock. We're adding policy number eleven to encourage partnerships with nonprofit developers and similar organizations that provide lower moderate income housing units. Uh, or create opportunities for first-time homer, homeownership, or help vulnerable homeowners maintain and stay in their homes. Um, adding policy number twelve to encourage the development of residential land within the urban growth boundary at densities. And for housing types consistent with those identified in the city's most recently adopted HNA. So both this policy and policy number one are basically directing the city to look at. And respond to the needs that are identified in your most recent HNA. Um, and so, um. Hopefully we would be adopt, um, updating that HNA regularly. Um, adding policy number thirteen. Um. Lastly, adding policy number thirteen, which would encourage the voluntary rezoning of low or medium density zoned properties. To a higher density designation if they are next to other sites that are zoned for high density. Or next to services such as transit lines, schools, parks, libraries, or the downtown zone. And, um, once again, it would be a voluntary thing. So, and there's, this is not really a major change to what we already currently allow. Which is if someone wants to request a zone change, they need to submit a zone change application. They need to meet all the criteria and it needs to get reviewed by the planning commission and then the city council. Um, they need to show how they meet the, um, comprehensive plan goals and policies associated with the zone change. So what this policy would do is just provide a little bit of policy support for people who are requesting zone changes in those areas that make. More sense to basically upzone. It's not pre, it's not, you know, um, rubber stamping anything. It would still have to go through the approval process. Um, and then moving on to, um, our, our comprehensive plan also has an implementation section. And so in this section, we basically outline specific actions that the city. Intends to take in order to accomplish those goals and policies. Um, and so. The changes here just capture that we are, um, intending to, or we are directing ourselves to update the code regularly. To meet the needs identified in the comp plan. Um, we should be regularly monitoring the supply of buildable land within the urban growth boundary in order to assure. That enough is available to support the community's growth. So that's what I was talking about. Um, you know, we should be updating our housing needs analysis regularly, updating that buildable lands inventory reg, regularly. Um, and then, um. Implement additional strategies in order to address housing needs as staffing and monetary resources allow. So this last one is just, um, recognizing that we have all these intentions captured in the policies here, but we are not. Um. We're not required to meet all of them all at the same time. Obviously, um, we have limited resources and staff capacity. And so we will do our best to meet these policies and goals, but, um. Yeah, we're not required to meet all of them all at the same time. And that's it for the comp plan amendments.
And Richard, you did read that, but it's redlined out. So it was in the code about the thousand feet that's being removed. I mean, thousand square feet, but it's been removed. It's on page five of your.
Yeah, it's page two of seven over here.
Okay. Did you find it? It's lined out. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So this brings us to a point where we got to make a decision, right? A recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. Terry, you still with us?
Yes, sorry. Sometimes it takes me a second to get to the unmute button.
Oh, that's all right. We, uh, just checking to make sure you're still with us. So we need to make a recommendation that goes to city council. Is that correct?
Yes.
So now that we've heard it all, read it all a couple of times, do we need to make any, uh? Addition, subtractions? Did we make any corrections tonight on what we talked about?
There was one comment that Tom made. All right, there was one comment that Tom made. He disagreed with the non-conforming lot development allowance, but that is the only suggested change that I have written down. I didn't hear anything else.
I think I asked for two, two parking spaces.
All right.
Two parking spaces per, per unit.
Per unit.
I'm, I'm going through the quality of life as well as the common sense of most people are going to have two cars.
But see, they listen to me, they don't you.
What's that?
They listen to me, but not you.
That's normal. So the, the parking, are you talking generally? Overall zone classifications or ADU specifically? Cause it seems like.
No, 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 it wasn't for just the ADUs. It's just every unit should have. And if they want to make it just for the, uh, uh, multi uses or the multi. Units of the, uh, apartments or whatever you want to call them, cottage. Whatever.
Missing the middle housing.
Yeah.
You're not referring to apartment complexes, but to duplexes, triplexes.
Exactly. Everything should have two. I don't know anybody's got one car unless the other one's not running.
I'm probably the only one in town.
You might.
We only had one car for many years, actually when we were younger and then when we were older, because our kids took our car. And it takes a lot of brain space to have only one car and figure. I forgot Bon at the grocery store multiple times. Because, because I was supposed to go pick him up. So it most, I think most people do have two. And we've tried to work on the, um, like the spacing to, to make on-street parking more like, so it's not like you don't have any curb space to park. But I don't know if that's actually a specific thing that's addressed. And the.
Yeah, they would have to, in order to qualify for that exemption that we were talking about for the, um, common wall dwellings. They would have to demonstrate where the on-street, that the adjacent on-street parking is if they're proposing to only. Uh, provide one off-street parking spot.
But for a duplex, you'd only need three.
A duplex would need three.
So there'd be one car missing and one car on the street at least. And then, yeah, I don't know, whatever you guys think, if you want to.
Doesn't mean they. And they, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just thinking, it doesn't mean that. I was just thinking, it doesn't mean that they wouldn't or couldn't build more. It's just that that's the absolute minimum.
Right. But since there's not, there's not any, our code currently says one in most cases, isn't that right? So this would be another, this would be an extra amendment outside of what's being proposed.
It, yeah, it would replace the one and a half to two. And possibly the one plus one.
Because I understand it, we're just talking about the suggested changes to the plexes, to the two duplexes, triplexes and quadplexes. Is that correct? And I think what I'm hearing, at least from one of you, is to keep it at two for those types of housing. Is that, I think that's what I'm hearing.
Common sense drives me that way.
That's what he's saying, I think.
Two per unit is what you want, Richard?
I think it's important.
How would, how would that change the feasibility? Because this, this whole thing is, is around making it possible to build a duplex on the, the spaces that we have, you know, the land that we have. Is it, does that change the financial feasibility of building a house to require, or building a duplex to require four off-street parking spaces?
It definitely makes it more challenging on smaller lots. And that's the reason for suggesting the lower requirement. And again, it doesn't keep people from providing more if they want to do that. But, yeah, particularly for smaller lots. If it's a large lot and if the spaces are simply, you know, spaces, not garages, it's, it's not a huge, um, feasibility issue, but if it's a small. Especially, I'm just like, finish real quick. For duplexes and triplexes, it, it becomes a financial feasibility issue, um, on those smaller lots. Triplex is even more than duplexes because that's six spaces, you know, on a, uh, it's very hard to fit in three units and six spaces on a, a smaller lot.
And I don't know that anyone wants six spaces of driveway in front of their triplex building. That doesn't seem like a pleasant way to live. It just seems like you would go out your front door and see cars.
I'm just thinking about the one that they have down there at Forest and Lakeshore. And, uh, they have their parking lots as well as their garages. And so it just, you know, they had one and it turned out terrible. And so anyway, they're all parked out on the street at this point.
On exhibit thirteen, page seven, there's a fourplex that shows four single hole garages with four off-street parking.
Is that the one from Sandy?
Yeah, that one.
Yeah. That was the only good one of the pictures. The rest of them didn't have any.
What about that duplex up on second by Clockmouth River Elementary? It's like a between Pierce and Shepherd. I'm just looking at it and I can't tell if it has four. It has like a wide parking space in the middle, but I don't know if it's actually four or if it's less. But we're just trying to think of examples in our community.
Where's that at?
On, so if you, if you go up, go up main, take a right on second, go in front of Clockmouth River Elementary. Crossover Pierce, there's that relatively new duplex right there.
Right by Punkies.
Yeah, right by Punkies, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm looking at an overhead view of it, but it must have four spots. Because that's what the current requirements are. It just, I think it does get more prohibitive as the, like you get into the triplex or the quadplex.
I can see the, the, the benefit for a smaller lot to have one or two less, uh, parking spaces if there's none available. They might have to go alongside the house and, you know, one blocks the other, but that's, that doesn't, that's not uncommon in Estacada anyway.
Okay, so where are we going with this?
Well, in my, my assessment is the smaller lots should be exempt from having two spaces, but the rest should have. Because you're talking big blocks of property with big numbers of, of units. They can come up with the units, they can come up with the parking.
How small is small?
Well, what's, what's seventy-five hundred square feet and smaller? Or should I go down to five thousand square feet? You know, what do you think?
So you could get a triplex on a seventy-five hundred square foot lot, right at twenty-five hundred each. But if you hit fourplex, then you're gonna have a larger lot. I don't know, that's hard to interpret, Richard.
Now you see what I see. Thank you.
I, I will admit in some of the other communities that we worked in, um, have worked in over the last year or two, um, on amendments related to middle housing, they did take that approach. They did, um, require fewer spaces on smaller lots. Um, I think that cutoff was generally, it differed, but, um, it was sometimes on the order of like seven thousand square feet. So I think if you wanted to recommend that, that lots below seventy-five hundred or seven thousand, um, that you required fewer spaces per unit, we could, we could make that recommended change and take that to the council.
I, I kind of agree with him at seven thousand feet. That should be a cutoff. Okay, for, for less. Thank you. I like that.
So then anything over seventy-five hundred would have two, um, two parking spots per unit.
Or duplexes and triplexes.
For any type of unit.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it be for duplexes and, aren't we talking specifically duplexes and triplexes?
Oh, right.
No, all units.
Well, I think.
Be, we would not be, these amendments aren't proposing any changes to multifamily parking requirements.
So just up to four, just up to a quadplex, right?
So this would just be for the plexes. Is that right?
I think, I think that's what we're talking about. Seventy-five, seventy-five hundred square feet and less can have the reduced parking that's proposed, but if it's more than seventy-five hundred square foot lot, you're back to the two spaces.
For everything.
Per unit.
Yeah.
Because.
Okay.
By the way, you're looking at six hundred units with six hundred cars.
No, no, not, no, because we're only, we're only, yeah, we're only talking about up to a quadplex.
Just a quadplex.
Yeah, so the apartments, we're not making changes to those.
All right.
Right?
I, I think there's a confusion when we say multi-dwelling, because a duplex is a multi-dwelling, but it's not an apartment complex.
Yeah, I, I, I'm.
But are you all okay with what we suggested for plexes below seven thousand or seventy-five hundred square feet?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, then I would say we have what we need to move forward.
Me too. Okay.
Would it be cleaner if we just said all duplexes and triplexes require, can require one parking spot plus one? And all four plexes? Because if you have to have twenty-five hundred square feet per unit, right?
For the plexes.
Preferences, but I do think we have what we need to move forward if, if, you know, if you're comfortable with what was suggested.
Okay. You comfortable? Okay. Let's go.
Good.
What else we got?
So that was one of the potential changes. The, the, yeah, the only other one that I had written down also was the disagreement about the non-conforming lots. And then it sounded like they're what people didn't want to move forward with any recommendation about the ground floor residential. So someone could make a motion and include which of those three potential changes or other changes.
Is this pertaining to downtown Estacada?
The ground floor is, yes, is the ground floors.
And nothing is included in the amendments currently related to that. So if your motion doesn't even address that, then the recommendation would not move forward with that being part of the planning commission's recommendation. We will still disclose that option to the council. They could decide to include it. Um, they could still decide to include it, even if the planning commission recommended against it, right? So.
It'd be good to have your opinions, though, I think, going to the council.
Fifty fifty there. Okay, what's included here?
Richard, I would like to make a clarification on what I said earlier. Um, I'm all good, like with the fourplex on Zobrist that has Main Street resident, but I'm not good with, um, Main Street or Broadway having Main Street residential or ground floor residential.
Okay, so you, you're saying if they wanted to put, uh, downstairs, they'd have to get a conditional use.
It's currently prohibited. It's currently.
Are you just prohibiting it altogether?
It's already prohibited to have ground floor residential fronting Main Street or Broadway. These amendments are not proposing any change to that, but the testimony we received is encouraging to allow ground floor residential fronting Main Street.
So that would be a council's decision?
Yes.
Okay.
But you guys.
They know about it.
But you guys liked that one about replacing current residential.
I'm, I'm in favor of replacing current residential. Grandfather.
Okay, I, I'll make a motion that we re, do the replace current residential thing that Ben suggested that we adopt the, um, changes, uh, with, with the exception of the, um, of Richard suggested two things for the duplexes and triplexes, two, two spaces. And what am I missing? Anything?
That sounds like a pretty good motion. We have a sec, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
What did she just say?
Everything this Taylor discussed.
Her motion includes, so it would be recommending approval, um, with, um, adding an amendment to allow ground floor residential to front, I think just Main Street only if, and I need clarification on that, or would it be fronting bo- both Main or Broadway? It was just that we could, if there was, because Ben raised a question about whether it, w- whether if their current ground floor residential was destroyed, if it could be replaced. And I was just saying, I wasn't saying that we should add it everywhere. I was saying just if some things that we can replace current buildings with the same. Yes.
Pre-existing and just on Main.
Right, okay. Yeah. Um, so that and then requiring on lots seventy-five hundred square feet, feet or larger, um, any of the plexes will need to have two parking spaces per unit. That is the motion that I heard.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it. We have a second.
We've already discussed, but we have the opportunity to discuss again if we need to.
Well, with all this discussion, I was ready to change my vote. But with this, with this motion, I can't accept it. We, I just don't think we have the retail space that we need. So if you put a residential in, in the middle of town on the bottom.
No, I, sorry, I wasn't suggesting that. I was just saying specifically where, where it already exists.
If you wanted to leave it alone, don't say anything.
No, no, I, but I.
You just brought up the motion, now it's on, so.
Right, but I was saying specifically.
My whole thing is, I, I was listening to Taylor and she's, what she said and now it's that motion I can't accept.
No, I, I'm just so clear. I agree with you a hundred percent about, about ma- preserving the downtown space for, for retail. The, Ben had raised the issue about, it, it's very confusing if the current downtown residential that we have on one of those two streets is just, if it is destroyed, can it be replaced with this, with the same thing? And I was saying, yes, if, if that specific building is destroyed, it can be replaced with the same thing to, so that, so that that's cleared up. It doesn't open up any new space for being ground floor residential in downtown.
But I think it would open it for like.
Definitely open it. You just brought it on into the motion.
If it wasn't a, if it, yeah, if it wasn't destroyed, right, you know, if it was actually just wanting to be redeveloped.
Does that change your motion, Tara? If that ones, if that same spot, for whatever reason, that, if, if, yeah, I, it doesn't, it doesn't change that for me.
Can we make that in two separate motions?
Why would it be two? Okay, we just need one motion.
Okay. Sorry.
If there's existing ground floor residential, it can be replaced with ground floor residential.
Yes, and it literally repli- uh, uh, applies to exactly one building downtown.
Two.
Oh, sorry, two.
Where is the second one? Three hundred Main and McCray's.
Okay.
I'm not sure that three hundred Main counts.
I don't think it does either.
Fourth Avenue.
The name of it's three hundred Main.
I know, but it doesn't, you don't have an entrance on Main Street. You have an entrance facing the side street.
So then exactly right either then, because it kind of faces the grocery store parking lot in that one unit.
The corner building that is not used for anything but storage with the mushrooms on the wall faces a side street. If you're talking about McCray specifically, those units face Main Street.
I keep going back to the intent of this whole project here is to facilitate building of other dwellings other than single family homes on five thousand seventy-five hundred foot lots. If there's existing residential, whether it's low income or a situation like three hundred Main, we should be preserving and or improving it if we have the opportunity. And if that's the location to do it, then I think we should not inhibit the owner or whoever wants to buy that and maybe improve that property.
Well, there's.
You don't have to agree with me, but that's the intent of this.
Is there only one opposition to it? And if so, can we, can we go forward with the vote? Or what's the?
That's exactly what I was gonna say. All for the vote.
Okay, let's vote. All those in favor of? Roll call vote?
There we go.
Go down the list and write yes or no for who, who wants yes and who wants no. You're on.
All right. Uh, Commissioner Harwick.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Sager.
No.
Commissioner Hawks.
Yes.
Commissioner Riddle.
No.
Yes. All right, uh, motion passes.
Port of two.
Okay, so this is a recommendation of the city council.
We will capture that and we'll capture those changes in the updated amendments. And this will go before the city council on Monday, October tenth at seven PM.
Oh, not next Monday?
Not next Monday. The marijuana amendments will go to council next Monday.
So is that our next thing to take care of?
Next item on the agenda.
And that's the next on the agenda. Thank you, Matt and Kate.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need to take a quick, uh, restroom and, uh, recess?
Yes, please. Five minutes.
Okay, we'll be back here at, uh, nine thirteen. All right, let's go ahead and, uh, open the planning commission meeting back up after a brief recess. Uh, we're gonna discuss ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero seven. Uh, city of Estacada is proposing amendments to several sections of title sixteen, uh, our development code and mainly pertaining to marijuana retailing in the downtown zone. So staff, go ahead and let's dive into this thing, Pete first.
All right. Here we go. Let me get my proper notes in front of me. Okay, dispensaries. All right, so this is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero seven, amending several sections of title sixteen development of the Estacada municipal code that pertain to marijuana retail or otherwise known as dispensaries. Um, the planning commission first held a hearing on these amendments on July twenty-eighth, which was tabled and is being reopened tonight, and the planning commission will forward a recommendation to the city council who will issue the final decision at their meeting on Monday, September twenty-sixth, seven PM. Is that right? Seven PM?
Yes.
On the twenty-sixth. Sorry, and that decision, uh, will be final unless it's appealed to Luba. The Land Use Board of Appeals. So this code amendment, um, was drafted at the request of the city council who has had, um, several conversations now resulting in their interest in changing the rules and the process for allowing marijuana retail in the city. And the goal of this amendment is to allow dispensaries as a conditional use in the downtown zone, which would be approved by the council instead of by the planning commission and which would not be allowed within one hundred feet of Broadway or Main Streets and also not allowed within one thousand feet of any other dispensary. Currently, dispensaries are only allowed in the general commercial and highway commercial zones and only if they get a conditional use. and only if they get a conditional use permit, um, and only if they're located outside of the minimum separation distance buffers. Um, those buffers currently prohibit dispensaries within a thousand feet of parks, schools, churches, daycares, sports fields, or other places where children congregate regularly. This map shows where dispensaries are currently allowed, um, takes into consideration both the, um, underlying zoning and also the thousand foot buffers. Um, and then still, even within that yellow outline, they would need to get that conditional use approval, which currently would go to the planning commission. So the proposed changes are remove dispensaries from the general commercial, general commercial and highway commercial zones, and allow them in the downtown zone, but not within a hundred feet of Broadway or Main. And only as a conditional use that would be approved by the city council. Um, and then the amendments would also change the thousand foot buffers um, to only include other dispensaries, so not parks or schools or those other things that I listed on the last slide. And there would also, um, be some explicit language, which we'll see in a second. Requiring conditional use dispensary applicants to demonstrate how they're going to mitigate impacts to neighboring residential uses. So if the dispensary would be within one hundred feet of an existing dwelling, it could still be allowed, but their conditional use application would need to be um, specific about mitigating potential, um, impacts to those neighboring residences. So here's the updated language of the code amendment. Um, the two kind of main parts of the code amendment are, um, this new conditional use allowed in the downtown zone, which is a cannabinoid retail business, provided that it is located more than one hundred feet from Main Street and more than one hundred feet from Broadway Street. Cannabinoid retail may only be approved by the city council following an evaluation of the approval criteria for conditional uses in S T K municipal code sixteen point eight eight, which is the conditional use chapter, and following a public hearing pursuant to S K municipal code sixteen point one three two. And then, um, the marijuana retail regulations that we have in chapter sixteen point six five would also, um, that's where the minimum separation distances are established and defined how to measure those. Um, and so that is where you find the one thousand foot, um, distance required from any other marijuana retailer. Um, so looking through the approval criteria, um, the council did, as you can see, change some of the specific language on the, on the last version of this ordinance. The use allowed in the downtown zone, like the, the last sentence of that said something about how the it was, we were only going to allow one dispensary in the city and it was going to be, um, selected by the city council following, um, you know, uh, competitive selection process, um, according to their criteria relating to, you know, maximizing community benefit. And so there were concerns about the subjectivity of that, um, selection process, and so that part was removed. Um, and so instead of doing that, they will be selecting potentially more than one dispensary, um, if they can meet the approval criteria for that conditional use and meet those minimum separation, uh, requirements. Um, so what I was about to say about approval criteria, obviously the council did make some changes to the specifics of the proposal um, in terms of how the code is worded. Um, but the approval criteria that apply to it remain the same, and there aren't any changes to how, to, to staff's findings related to those approval criteria. So I, I was thinking I could just breeze through these. Um, we can stop and go into detail if you want. Um, but per usual, the staff report goes into a lot more detail about how each specific approval criteria, including um, statewide planning goals, comprehensive plan policies, and development code requirements are met. Um, so unless you want to go into a deep dive on those things, I'm just gonna sort of click through these slides, if that's okay.
Yeah, what was the separation between retail businesses, or is there?
One thousand feet. We currently do have that, um, in our code. Like, we, we currently require one thousand feet between marijuana retailers. So that is the only minimum distance, uh, minimum separation distance that we would be keeping from what we currently have, and then we'd be adding that, um, minimum one hundred feet from Broadway or Main.
So if somebody was strategic, they could put it right in the center of the city and conceivably be the only one.
Someone could, someone could, I'm sure could get creative, yeah.
Okay.
Um, and so this is why, um, yeah, Alan made these nice maps. Um, and you've got a, I don't know if you want to call it a, a ruler, what do you call that? Scale bar. The scale bar is showing you, um, two thousand feet, so you can kind of get an idea of how wide um, the different parts of the downtown zone are. Sorry, Tara, that you don't, I don't, did you send that out to Tara? I didn't put it in the PowerPoint, sorry.
That's okay.
Incoming email, Tara.
You won't have the scale bar, though.
So, yeah, that, the map, that, the map that you'll see in a second, and I can actually pull, I can pull it up on the screen here. Um, because there's not anything more that I wanted to show in the presentation. So, yeah, let's pull this up on the screen. And there are two maps. So you have one that shows just the, um, one hundred foot buffer from both Broadway and Main, and then you have another map that shows also one hundred foot buffers from existing residential uses. So, and we, um, didn't end up having time to actually walk around and formally ground truth, what we believe to be pretty close. Um, but we tried to, we tried to identify, okay, where do we know there are existing residential uses? Um, and then Alan created the hundred foot buffer around those. So, so this map that I'm showing on the screen right now, this is showing both the hundred foot buffers from Broadway and Main and the hundred foot buffers from existing residential. So some of these areas, like around the border here, um, or these little kind of spots, these are places where the council could approve a conditional use, um, but they could, they could also make a denial upon finding that the impacts of that, um, proposed dispensary uh, were not demonstrated to be mitigated sufficiently by the applicant. Um, that addition to the code is kind of redundant because our conditional use regulations currently allow for, um, discretion um, around impact mitigation, you know, looking at, it calls for you to look at how the, how the proposed use might impact or conflict with the surround, the character of the surrounding neighborhood. I can't remember the, the exact code language, but so, um, so that part of the amendment is kind of already in line with what process you would go through for reviewing a conditional use anyway. Um, but it's expressly called out here because that is, um, that was one of the concerns that they wanted to make sure they were addressing. Um, so that is shown on that map, and then this map over here is just showing, let's get it to load. Just showing the hundred foot buffers, not showing the, uh, from Bro- from Broadway and Main, and not showing those residential buffers. So, um, I think what staff and the city council are gonna need from the planning commission is, um, yeah, once again, a, a recommendation that includes whether you're recommending approval or denial. And if it's approval, are there any changes being recommended, um, to what is currently being proposed? And so just to recap, um, so the ordinance will amend the downtown zone to allow marijuana retail not closer than a hundred feet to Broadway or Main, not within a thousand feet of each other, and it would be approved by the city council as through the conditional use review process. Um, and because they want to be the review body for that, we did also propose amendments to the conditional use chapter of the code, um, to make sure that it's clear. Where is this? It's clear that, um, there, there are no changes being proposed to all of the other, um, review processes for conditional uses. So the planning commission is the, um, designated and sort of, um, default review body for conditional uses, unless it's expressly stated in the code that a particular use is supposed to be reviewed by the city council. And in that case, which this would be marijuana retail would be the only use that would go to the council. So in that case, marijuana retail would go to the council for conditional use approval rather than to the planning commission.
Is that because the city council doesn't think we're capable?
I don't want to speculate about, on the record. Um, but, uh, you know, originally when they were talking about, um, yeah, kind of working through what they wanted to do. Um, the idea was not that it would be, was not even necessarily that it would be a conditional use. It would just be, I think the main idea was that they would have some selection process that they would, um, be making that decision with. And so through those conversations about the legality of, uh, and like subjectivity of the selection process that they were initially proposing, um, it seemed like the conditional use option still allowed them to, um, yeah, apply some discretion, um, legal, through a legal, legally existing process. Um, but then they would just need to be, if they wanted to be that review body, then we would need to make that explicit in the code.
Okay. Thanks for the staff report.
You are welcome.
Any questions?
Not for you.
Okay, it's not about parking spots, it's pot shops, is it?
No.
Okay.
That's done. But now that you mention it.
No.
Is there empty buildings in this green spot anywhere that would house them?
I don't think we've done that analysis.
Potentially.
Oh, maybe I'm ahead of my game.
Yeah, I mean, potentially, there, there's, somebody could rent a space. I mean, I don't know if there's, um, I mean, we're kind of eyeballing things that, I don't know if they're available right now, but, um, there could be.
Tom and I were proponents against this, but that was way before they legalized.
I know. It's a quandary.
No, it's just, it's just different. You know, I was, myself was thinking Bennett Tire Shop. But I see it's not in the green space.
It's not, but it is what, it's in that.
Close.
Yeah, it's a, like, within a hundred feet of a residential use, so they would just need to, they would just need to demonstrate sufficiently that it would not impact the residential use.
Happens to have lots of parking and an eatery where they get hungry right next door.
That's true.
I'm just saying.
When it, when the map splits a property, just an easy one would be like Les Schwab. So you could sell it out of the front door, but not out of the tire warehouse side? But realistically, how does that work when it comes to you guys a- and the city council on the variance bra- or the conditional use?
When a map, when the map splits a property, like when that buffer, um, I think that would be up to the city council to decide, because there are certainly, um, instances in which you can imagine, okay, what if there's like a large kind of long property and the place where they want to put the dispensary is quite far from the edge of that buffer, but technically it's all on the same property. Um, I personally would interpret this to allow them to cite it outside of the buffer as long as those, you know, we would condition that development to prohibit any part or activity of the dispensary to encroach over the buffer. Um, but if the council felt differently, then I think that, I think the way the codes worded, that they could exercise their judgment on that legally.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at, I'm looking at this green space that you've got knocked out here. And I thought, is our fire department actually a good place to sell that stuff? You know, they might just love it, but, uh, you know, I.
Yeah, ju- just to clarify, I just basically looked at every single parcel that was not touched by this, like, restrictive zone, and yet there was no consideration taken to whether it was the fire department.
You made a re- a restrictive zone based on the, the the hundred foot off of the two main highways and the residential.
Yeah, off those two, the two main streets and residential, exactly. That's it, that's it.
Tara, you had something?
Um, yeah, I have, I have, just a question and a comment. Um, I looked through the, through the city code and I couldn't find anything that doesn't mean it's not there, um, about whether we have any restrictions on where you can put liquor stores or bars. Does anyone know that?
It wouldn't, um, I was starting to say it wouldn't be in the development code. Um, but we do have code relating to alcohol, pulling this up.
All the stuff that I could find, I just did a search in the code and the, the municipal code, and all I could find was like, kids can't have it, or you have to cover it in public or whatever it is. Um, but I was just wondering about specifically about where you can put, um, bars or liquor stores, or how many there can be or anything, or who approves them.
Obviously, bars is exempt because the restaurant up here by the school, you know, when I was in the city council, we kind of, we went to OLCC to stop it, but they all ruled us. Um, so there is no, there is no stopping OLCC from doing anything. And this little shop over here, the beer tab thing, that used to be Sears when I was a kid. Um, and now it's a well, a bar type thing, so, so they go everywhere, so, and nobody stops them.
So, so there's no, I mean, so there's nothing, there isn't any code about where you can put a bar or a liquor store?
There is, there's a transparency requirement in the downtown zone on Broadway, only on Broadway and Main for transparency, like you have to see into it. So like, for instance, Trails has a bar in the back, but the front is the restaurant, although that might be changed, though. But they still, they still have, they still have windows, like if they're required to have it um, with a solid, like, most bars you don't see into. I don't know if that's.
It's partitioned off.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. That might be a restriction that would, but we don't specifically say you can't.
I think, yeah, I think the answer to your question is no, basically.
I get, then I, then I guess, you know, like, uh, how? It just, it just seems kind of extreme to me that not only, you know, that, that we're just, i- it's a, it's an implicit value judgment about which, which drug is worse, and again, I don't, I will never set foot in whatever, whatever dispensary is here. I don't care about it, but it just seems very bizarre to me that there's all this stuff about this one thing, and that the city council, it has taken a decision-making um, kind of process randomly out of our hands. They don't decide about where bars or gun stores or whatever can go in the town, but for some reason this is called out. To me, that seems a- a- and taken out of our hands. It, it's, it seems like another, another thing that is sort of open, open to legal challenge, the, the same way the, the value judgment is, because there's, there's just nothing. There, there's not another, you know, th- there's not a corollary business that has the same, like tobacco stores. I couldn't find anything in the code that, that this applies to. So it just, it just seems odd to me, and I don't, I don't really don't really, um, like the, the part of this that takes it out of the planning commission's purview.
Thanks, Tara.
I need to correct something that I said about the, um, uh, if there were a long property, part of it were outside of the buffer, part of it were inside. Um, our code actually has a pre-existing definition. Our code actually has a pre-existing definition or you know, calculation of how to measure that distance. So I was, I was wrong when I said that. For the purposes of this section, distances are measured by a straight line between any point on the boundary line of. The property containing the retailer to any point on the boundary line, on the other boundary line. So if any point of the property containing the marijuana retailer goes within that buffer, then it would be. Precluded or prevented, you know, excluded from.
You're part of a building makes it, all of it is not usable.
If part of the property that the building would be on.
Just property.
Right.
I think most of that applies would, would be like where the residential buffer zone is. So it wouldn't impact as many properties because they could show that they're not. That they're mitigating any impact to the residential that abuts them. They just have to be able to, they just have to speak to that and convince the council that that's taken care of. But for the thousand feet between dispensaries or the hundred feet from Broadway, that would be the case. It would be. Hard and fast.
So this wouldn't qualify for a food cart. Dispensary.
There's no way though.
This wouldn't qualify as a. On wheels food cart dispensary.
I think the, the internal regulations of it wouldn't allow that now.
Probably not. Okay. I was thinking tiny houses.
Okay. So because we're revisiting this, do we need to open it up for public comment?
Uh, yes, because this one was not. We didn't, we didn't close or recess it properly. So we had to renotice it. It's a basically a new public hearing.
Okay. So if it's okay with everybody, I'm gonna close the planning commission meeting. We're going to open the public hearing on this. And I need to read a piece here. Do any members of the commission wish to abstain or declare ex parte contact? And I will declare ex parte contact. Kim had called me at one point in time to discuss the, if we had received the letter. This is the gist of the conversation. There wasn't any decision-making done, but I just wanted to be upfront and say that we did have a phone conversation. So we've already heard the staff report. Statement about evidence presented at the hearing, an issue which may be the basis for appeal to the city council must be raised. Prior to the close of the record at the final evidentiary hearing on the specific application. Such issues shall be raised with sufficient specificity. As for the planning commission and the party's adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Failure of initiative to be raised at the hearing in person or by letter or failure to provide sufficient specificity. To afford the planning commission and party's adequate opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the city council on that issue. With that being said, would anybody in the audience like to come up and speak on behalf of this ordinance? If so, go ahead and step to the mic. We'll have you introduce yourself, address, and then. Being that it's nine thirty-nine, if we can keep it five minutes or less, that'd be awesome.
You guys are really brave and patient. My name is Kim Truhella. I live at two two eight seven seven South Stormer Road in Estacada. So the other side over. Not in town proper. We've been going through this for so long, it's not even funny. The city council has been so patient and staff has been exceptional to, to go through this. I would like to just say for the record, this is, I've been dealing with specifically staff and city council since 2020. I would like to open a dispensary in the city of Estacada because. I am a marijuana producer on the other side where, where I reside. That's where my production license lies. It's in our industry called vertical integration. It's pretty much important to all facets of the industry. But especially because of the way the market is with, with not only prices and just. Everything about where we're at in our industry, it's just a necessity. So tracking that, this has been going on for years. Again, just wanted to do business in a town. Not only where I live, but also where I work and where my kids have attended school and graduated and, and, and the like. So. I understand that not everybody's for it. I also feel that because I live here, I can be respectful and dignified. To the people who really are forthright against it. There are however, a lot of people that would like to see it happen. But I just want to speak to the industry just for a little bit, just so you guys, since you're not as familiar with. The things that we've been dealing with over at city council. So if you, I can submit this to as public testimony. This is an article from Oregon State University. Back in winter of twenty twenty-two. So. Basically it said, the latest report provides broad economic overview of the agriculture, food and fiber industry and also look at new developments. Including hemp and recreational marijuana industries, the impact of the wildfires in COVID nineteen. Fast forward a little bit. Recreational marijuana, which was legalized in Oregon in twenty fifteen, is now a one point four billion dollar industry that employs almost ten thousand people in the state. That's pretty significant. Through pandemic, our industry was considered essential. And part of the reason for that is because of the tax dollars that we bring into the state. This also is public information that you can find on the OLCC website. But it talks about literally the millions of dollars that come into. The Oregon Department of Revenue and then submitted to either cities or counties depending on jurisdictions of where the dispensaries are. So you can find that online at the OLCC. As of this month. There were thirteen million, three hundred eighteen thousand, nine hundred eighteen dollars. That was. State tax received and local tax received was two million, one hundred forty-five thousand, nine hundred sixteen, just in this month in June alone. But this goes through the history since day one of recreational sales. We also. There was a legislative change that shuffled how and where that money is spent. This is also. For your information on the OLCC website. But where that, those tax dollars are going, and I'll just read to you the second quarter of twenty twenty-two. Cities and counties where Department of Revenue collects local tax was in excess of six million. Drug Treatment and Recovery Services Fund was twenty-six million. State School Fund was four million, five hundred thousand. Mental Health Alcoholism and Drug Services was two million, two hundred fifty thousand. Oregon State Police was one million, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred. Drug, I'm sorry, Oregon Health Authority for Drug Treatment and Prevention, five hundred sixty-two thousand, five hundred. And then it goes into the local agencies, the tax that they would be getting for opting in and having dispensaries. This is significant. We're having a huge impact. I also belong to a couple of organizations that you're probably familiar with, Oregon Association of Nurseries and the Oregon Farm Bureau. Again, more statistics and it doesn't matter whether you're talking about deciduous shade trees, beer root nursery products. Nursery production, Christmas trees, we exceed all of these. In just the few years that we've been in industry. It's not going away. We definitely have obstacles. And the, and the fact of the matter is. In order for Estacada to capitalize on that tax. There has to be dispensary. That is where. The, it comes from and then gets paid and then the state sends it out. Back in November of twenty twenty-one, the Oregon voters passed that local tax. So. We would immediately, as soon as one of these bodies will approve a dispensary. We'll, we'll get that tax. Now the bureaucracy of it is kind of complicated because. The, the OLCC is so hyper-regulated, the list of criteria to meet. Is I think four pages long. Anything from certain kinds of doors, blackout windows, certain kind of safes, certain kind of security. It, it, it's just a mile long. The, the city council and of course, members of our community. You know, don't want it to be in certain areas. I think we've established that it can be located wherever that. Would meet everybody's criteria. But also part of, part of, I think that. The, the problem over the course of time is that it's gone from actually. Doing something with a good intent to actually solve a problem and have money coming into our city and, and doing. Good things with it to, it, it's, it's now become, I think overly political. The. The proposal that you have before you, it looks a lot different than one of the other iterations where. It was going to be an outright permitted use and now it's a conditional use and that. You can, you can read for yourself. This is public record as well. Not that I'm challenging how it's going to go about, but again, to thank you for Tara bringing this point up. There is no other business that has ever had to come before either the city council or the planning commission. That just couldn't just say, hey, I want to open a business. May I get a permit? Well, you can't get, you can't do it that way. You cannot do it that way with this industry. Because the first and foremost thing that you need to have before you can even get started. Is what they call land use compatibility statement. That means you have to have a location in mind that's going to get licensed and then build it out from there. I haven't been able to do that in two and a half years because of this process. So. Now that we're here, now we want to go through from conditional or just being outright approved to conditional use. Application, which I feel that the city should decide who they want to. Open a dispensary. It's a heavy responsibility. But in your packet tonight. I've included a letter from Commissioner Matt Alida stating. Not only that, that he knows me, but that I've been in the industry a really long time. That I've seen a lot of businesses come and go. That I'm here to stay and the reason is, is because I've lived here for fourteen years. I've heavily invested in my property. I've heavily invested in my business. And we were out fighting wildfires not even that long ago. So we're, we're here to stay. We're not going anywhere. So I don't think it should be just somebody. Just because they have a famous business name or something that's, you know, more trendy or whatever, that should be running the dispensary. I just think that I should be able to come here and say, this is what I want to do and may apply for a license to do it and, and where would you guys like that? I've had those discussions. I, I've actually submitted multiple addresses which would fit this criteria. And I'm just tired of going through them. You know, I can meet the standards and have for five years and be renewing my, my producer license for the fifth time. This coming up winter and, and I have no problem. My record's impeccable and I just went through and, and I can't say sailed through, but. Through an Oregon Department of Revenue audit for twenty eighteen and there were no changes made to either my personal or my business. So I'm completely qualified to run a dispensary. With that said, if you said, yes, you can open it, we're going to give you permission. City council is going to be happy to do it. It's a year from now. That's going to happen between the building, between now you have to buy a license, then you have to move the license. And then you have to get the OLCC to come out and do the checklist. And then once that's all approved, then you can. You know, buy your contents and open your store. It, it's a process. And so after two and a half years, I don't mean to sound frustrated. I just really wish that we can decide on how it's going to get rolled out. And to the attorney letter, that wasn't a threat of litigation. I had a question. Because I came to this planning commission for the first time, you guys brought a couple of things to my attention going through the process. And so I asked a question to an attorney who is established and respected in the cannabis community. And you have the answers in front of you, but the only question I asked was. Have you ever heard of anybody in the state of Oregon going through an application process? Instead of just getting a lux and going through the process that the state of Oregon has already laid out. He said, not only had he not heard about that, after he uncovered. A couple of listened to meetings and went through the ordinance as it was written. However, many iterations ago, that it wasn't technically legal. So. While the city attorney feels that I had, came about it maybe wrong or bad. It was with no malicious intent is, has nothing to do with litigating the city and. Exactly the opposite manner of trying to protect the city from litigation. Because I am very intimately familiar with how the OLCC works and what the laws are. And since I hadn't heard about this process before. Trying to keep us from getting into trouble. And more importantly, if I get the privilege to do the dispensary here, then I don't want to be called out. I don't want to be challenged or questioned personally or professionally. And I certainly don't need our commission, whether it's a planning commission or the city council being called into question.
I'm gonna ask you to wrap it up real quick here.
Yeah.
I think everybody here understands you're the local professional on this.
Definitely.
And so, and you got a lot of information to back up what you're saying.
Yeah.
So I'm going to ask real quick, is there any questions for Kim right now? From anybody? Tara, you got any questions out there? Kim, for the sake of time. Oh, sorry, Tara, go ahead.
Sorry, I know, no, I don't.
Okay. Kim, for the sake of time, I'm gonna wrap it up if that's all right.
That's totally fine.
Okay.
I appreciate your guys' time.
Appreciate all the information you had. It's getting late and I know you've been through this a lot and it's. Since there's nobody else out here, I think it's pretty reasonable to expect. We don't have anybody else to talk about it. Let's go ahead and. Drop back into the planning commission meeting. Then we have a obligation here to make a decision. Taylor, would you mind bringing that up on the screen? Just the, the options we have. And I have one quick question. The maps, are they? Is it one or the other or are we?
It's not, sorry.
Yeah, those are just different ways of approaching the restriction if you did want to restrict. And it sounds like. The street restrictions are pretty well baked in. But as for the residential restrictions, that's just to give you an idea of if, if those were followed, that's what it would look like. That would be the kind of. You'd be going from all that green to those, to the more limited areas right there.
The current version of this proposal. The residential district restrict, I guess I wouldn't call them restrictions. It, the residential buffers are showing where there's just the, that extra onus on the applicant. To demonstrate that they will mitigate impacts to the neighboring residential uses. So like screening. You know, odor and light reduction and stuff like that. The only restriction that's shown on that map is the hundred foot from Broadway Main.
Okay. Is that clear to everybody? Richard, you got a question?
I do. So she's not manufacturing anything wherever her site is. You're a producer, but you do that at home, but you bring the product down here. Okay, and have you picked a site if, at all yet? You didn't have to answer that. But I'm glad you did.
Melanie?
If, I don't know that this, it would make, it would change the council's mind, but if the planning commission would like to request, you know, if you would like the responsibility of. Doing that conditional use, I think you could recommend that to the council that you would be willing to take on that responsibility. But they at this point have thought that this is a decision that they would be making. And if you feel very strongly about it though, you could. You know, let them know how you feel.
I didn't make, oh, sorry.
So my, I guess my little question outside the realm. You would have to build a building to the specifications of OLCC. You wouldn't be able to use any building we got.
Improvements would have to be made to meet the OLCC specs though. Doors, windows. Thank you.
I didn't make a motion slide on this PowerPoint. I apologize, but the motion options would be moved to approve as presented, moved to approve with changes. For example, if you wanted to change who would be the review body. Change who would be the review body, have the planning commission approve that conditional use. We could capture that, those changes um, or move to deny.
And either way, it goes to the.
Either way, it goes to city council. And if there are substantial changes, the. We're supposed to demonstrate. We're supposed to substantiate why. So if you're denying it, why if you're?
If I'm approving it, I gotta go why?
Well, if you're, if you're approving with. For example, a cha- the change to have the planning commission uh, make that conditional use decision. Um, we're, we're gonna need to explain why. I mean, it seems a little bit obvious, but.
So this does fall into the realm of a conditional use no matter what.
Yes. That's how it's currently written.
Unless someone made a motion. What she said.
Right.
I'll make the motion of what she just said.
I don't know. Do we need to close?
Conditional use.
I, I came, I came out of the public area.
Okay.
Find a question. Okay, so Richard, go ahead.
Okay, so you're wanting a motion to approve. With. The knowledge that she's gotta have a. We're gonna prove it to the city council. And. She, whoever does this, if they approve it, it goes with the conditional use that she'd have to apply for.
So with the conditions that staff has set forth so far.
Of what? Yeah, the condition that staff has set forth.
No additional conditions.
I was, I really would have. I, I really think that we should consider having the condition that the, the pla- the planning commission approves this conditional use, just like we approve all the other ones. I don't personally, I, I, I feel like I said confused about why. This business is called out for all these. Conditions when no other one are. But I know that we're not gonna. We're not gonna get through a, a dispensary that. Doesn't have all these. Things on it, cuz it's, it's already the, this discussion, as she said, been going on for two years and I don't need to. Impede it further, but I do think that. It makes sense to keep this decision-making process the way the other ones are being made, which is planning commission approves the conditional use.
Okay. So, Richard, since you made the motion. You either have to. Retract it, or I guess we second it and write it down.
I, I want to ask Tara one question. So you want to approve the conditional use tonight, even though the council hasn't heard it?
No, I'm, I'm saying cuz, cuz what she's. What this, what this is doing is just allowing for anybody in the future to make. A conditional use or uh. A, a p- application, but the city council has asked that instead of. The planning commission approving the conditional, the future conditional use application, like we do all the other conditional use applications. They want to be the body that approves it. And so it would be something that would never come before us, even, even though the rest of the town's conditional uses do. So I'm just saying.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry if I was confusing.
I, I, I'm happy with what I just learned. So I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, and?
And then I will just do the simple one with uh, with pleasure. I'll move that we. Uh, send this forward to the city council with our approval.
I don't think that gains what Taylor was talking about. What?
Tara wants the fact that it remains with the planning commission bodies decision.
When it co- if it gets approved here and then gets approved at the city council, what she wants is that once it comes time to actually put one of these in. We would be the decision-making body.
Also, we are gonna be the decision body. I thought she wanted the council to take care of their own.
It's currently written that the council is.
Oh, okay.
And, and I was saying, cuz every, cuz every other use comes to us and not the city council, and I think it should just be. The same as every other use. I think it's, I think that's less likely to, to leave us open to legal challenge later. If we handle it the way we handle other conditional uses. If I'm the only one who's worried about it, then we can totally, you know. I, I don't want to keep holding it up, but um.
Tell you what, why don't you, Tara, why don't you make the motion?
Tara, can you make a motion?
Sure, yeah. It's a real hot night for me. My first two uh. Motions ever, I think. Um, I would make the motion that we approve this with, with the change that. The um, I guess it would just be striking the part that it goes to. City council instead of us.
Got it.
Planning commission's a decision-making body on the con- body on the conditional use. Right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion, fresh motion. Wait, and a second. Do we need to discuss?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. On these things, since we're going back to the um. Come back to us on all of these. And. With me being a foster parent, adoptive parent of the drug babies. I have a real hard time. On this. So. I, I agree with Tara's um. Thing, but from at, at this point, anything kind that comes up. As long as I'm on this commission, I will abstain. That way I don't hold nothing back. Okay? But, you know, if you see the kids. And you, you know, I get all the reports and it always starts with marijuana with the parents. And then goes back and I'm not. Down, downplaying. The, the, you know. The, the medical stuff at, at all.
You're being a father.
I'm, I'm being an emotional foster parent. And adopted. So. Anyway. Okay, that's it.
Well, I appreciate you being upfront with that.
Um.
I do have one question. Are we going by either of these tonight, or is this just a? Picture to look at? I don't understand this part of this.
Good question.
The maps are just for. Helping, helping uh, helping you imagine. What areas of the downtown would be prohibited? So the map that shows just Broadway and Main Street, that's showing. Where it would be absolutely prohibited. And then the map that has all those other um. The extra buffer areas that shows also areas where it um, would be more easily. Denied. If the applicant didn't demonstrate how they're gonna mitigate impacts. Neither of those maps are being adopted with the ordinance or anything.
I'd like to thank you for putting them out, Alan. That was. Helpful.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, we have a future. Abstention.
Why do we start right now?
Um, let's go ahead and do a vote on this. We'll do a roll call vote again. All right. Uh, Commissioner Haraway.
Yeah, believe it, but I'm gonna say yes.
Commissioner Birkins.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Sager?
Abstain.
Uh, Commissioner Hawks?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Brittle?
Yes.
Chairman Wille?
I'll go with yes.
All right, it passes five to one.
Okay, so this is going on to the city council next week, actually, right?
Uh, yeah, this coming Monday.
Twenty sixth.
So four days from now. Um. And, yeah, I will. In the morning. Update the. Documents accordingly. Thank you for um. Thank you for the discussion and, yeah, explanation of reasoning. So that's always really helpful for us. Um, so yeah, this will be going to council on Monday, September twenty sixth.
The council accepts it, then she has to apply.
Then she would have to go through of the conditional use application process. Yep. And we.
To the council to decide, like you're requesting that it comes back to you and they will still be able to. They'll be able to decide correct if they're, whether they still want to see it or not. That's it, what we body. It's been really hard to come to consensus on this. There's people that it's been. Um, some people are, are. I think, you know, we know it's here to stay. Um, and then there's other people that it's very hard for them to make this decision to say yes. And so I appreciate you guys making a decision. And a recommendation, whichever way it was gonna go tonight, because that will, that will help the council, I think. Um. And then, but then they will have the ultimate say on if they just still want to review the conditional use. But I think it's good that you. Said that you're willing to, to see it. I think some planning commissions would have said, no, we don't want to see it. Let them deal with it. And so I appreciate you guys.
I'd like to thank our staff here. They did a wonderful job with me anyway.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Um, it's late and. I'm looking through the agenda that I just buried in a pile of paperwork here. I was looking at it.
There's a, there's a public comment item after this, which I think Kim already spoke to. It was the letter. Um. That. That we received and sent out. And then there's a, an agenda item that we said we would put on all of the. Future agendas that is something like commission comments. So if there was anything else that the commission wanted to.
I have one. I would like the findings of both. Things today. After the council meeting.
Okay, yeah.
The result of it.
Yeah, the result, there you go, results, yes.
We'll add that to our um. Process. Send out the findings of council decisions.
What they've done and.
Yep.
If, if we're on the same page or if they, we gotta change their ways, no, just kidding.
Right.
You have to run again?
Are we allowed to change our votes after we've already done it? Or anything?
Uh.
There is a process.
I'm just curious.
Familiar with how that would work. You mean like in the same? Like right now, like right now, could you change your vote from ten minutes ago?
Maybe I'm out of, out of place here, but for ordinance twenty twenty-two-ten, I. Wholeheartedly agree with this package.
Oh.
Except for one thing.
Can we update the? Are we still recording? Can we update the record? I mean, would you wanna?
I don't think you.
I don't know.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't think it's, I think, I think you can make a public comment that you, you agree with everything.
That's.
And, and your vote's not gonna change the outcome of the, of that.
Right, correct. But yeah, you could, you could speak to it now though, if you wanted to.
Okay, I, I, I just want everybody to know that I agree that this package of the. Rezoning and the setbacks and everything, it's, that's great. My only concern was the Main Street and the businesses and residential. On the Main Street floor. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And that gets tricky when there's a motion. That has like a specific piece that you don't agree with and should you vote yes or no, hoping for a different motion? Yeah. Um, I'm, I'm sure I'll figure it out as we go along.
Uh, one last thing. There was a. Letter added to the packet from. The city regarding water rights. And our capacity. So I just want to make sure that everybody got that. Um. I'm still. I, I had a chance to talk to Chris Lewis about the wastewater treatment plant. I'm still not in love with the process nor the citing of that. And I. Want to figure out a way that maybe we can do a workshop. I, maybe, maybe the workshop times pass, but maybe more input is provided. By people.
I hear ya. Um, we're, we're gonna go out with an RFQ to get an engineering firm to work with us on this, cuz Kern MacLeod is too small to do this project. And then at that point, I think we should do more public outreach. Um, I. I hear, you know, it's, it's a big stretch to get all the way out to Balsam, you know, thinking fifty years ahead. I think the council's doing a great job to really look long-term and. I think that um, our. The engineer of record for the city believes that is the right thing to do. It's approved through DEQ. And so unless we hit a real roadblock, I don't see us pulling it back any closer to town. But I. It's, it's a jump, you know, but I think we'll have to have, we will have, when we get this new engineer on board, they'll help us with some public outreach and getting more. You know, explanations out how it's gonna work and.
Um, how, how does the funding work? Do, do we know anything about that?
Yeah, so we've been, we had what's called a one-stop. Um. And we met with Business Oregon organizes it and USDA was there, DEQ was there, Business Oregon with their loans. Um. And DEQ, we thought USDA was gonna be the best option. That's a, it's, I've always heard USDA is the way to go. Well, DEQ at this point is, has the best deal for us and they will fund the whole thing. But they don't have the new rules on the infrastructure funding that's coming out. Um. The bipartisan infrastructure law and stuff there. They don't have those new rules yet, probably won't till after the first of the year. So the recommendation is to go ahead and. We're applying for a loan. This hasn't gone through the city council yet, so we'll have to get approval to accept that. But to get the loan for the engineering portion, the design engineering permitting, so we can get that rolling over the next year, have the engineering done. And then in the next year, and it apparently takes about a year to get a loan to go through. Um, either go with DEQ or whoever else might have the best loan. Right now, DEQ will only forgive um, five hundred thousand dollars and we're talking. Like a twenty-five million dollar project. Um, and so we're, I'm, I'm hoping to get millions of dollars in the forgivable portion of that. Um, but we need to wait. So we're gonna get, we're planning to get the loan as long as council approves that to do engineering, so we can get it rolling. Could do an RFP to get the engineer on board. Do more informational. Um. I don't know, uh, like reaching out to public. I don't know how that all is gonna look yet. Um, and then next year, we'll. Figure out who's the best place to get the loan from for the construction. Work that through so that we're ready to go and build. I still have high hopes. In three years, it will be up and running. Things always cost way more and take me longer than I think, but that's, I think it could happen.
Is a loan the only option or is there a bond to go out?
Um, that I do not know about. You didn't. I'm not really an expert on bonds. I don't think we would do that. So if we do a bond, you know, I don't know exactly. I could, I can check on that though. Why, why are we doing a loan instead of a bond? Um, and it also means that. Unless we can get a lot of that as a forgivable. Portion. Um, our sewer rates are gonna have to get increased. We, right now, we're at like the lower end of the scale on. Um, everybody around us, but I feel like. That's not a bad thing, but um, we will have to make some increases in the sewer rates to fund the debt on the loan. Um.
Which is kind of why I asked about a bond. I mean, like with school bond, you ask the voters to say, hey, we're gonna build a new elementary school.
Mm-hmm.
And so your taxes are gonna go up by two dollars per thousand for twenty years.
Mm-hmm.
Whereas if you're going out for a loan, you have to pay back the loan, which a, a bond and a loan are essentially the same thing. It's just the process is.
Of how you do it, yeah.
So with, with a loan, you go get the loan. Some of it's forgivable. Some of it, you have to adjust the rates up.
Mm-hmm.
Which affects the people that are using the system, which makes sense.
Right.
Whereas a bond, you'd have to do that upfront. And so there's a big PR aspect of like, hey, we need a new sewer treatment plant and here's. Here's what we know and here's how much it's gonna cost. Do you approve it? And if not, then. Then you don't get it.
Yeah.
So.
That's one way. Let, let me look into that and see, yeah. I think we were just looking, I, I was just looking at the loan options. That's what Business Oregon was presenting, but. I mean, if it.
I'm not saying a bond's the right way by any means either, so.
I could ask about it though. And the more I, the, the one good thing about growth is if we were still twenty-five hundred people. Um, and needed a new wastewater plant, that's a. It's a heavy lift anyway, but it would really be heavy. And now that we have five thousand and are still growing, even though that's slow, it seems to be slowing a little bit. Um, we'll be able to spread it out a little bit more. And I think the same thing with a bond, you know, the more. People's, um, you know, you had, you used to have a massive, you know, field. Now it's full of houses and so they're paying more property taxes on that and they all chip in on the bond and hopefully it, it gets paid off faster. Um, yeah, I'll look into that and, but that's kind of where we're at right now. So we are. Pushing ahead with it. And we'll get some more. I'll have Chris or, or Kurt, our engineer, or both of them, give you an update at some point too, cuz. You guys need to. Have all the information, so you're not making decisions in a vacuum.
Okay. Without any further ado. Are we ready?
We are ready.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tara.